Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call into open session this work session meeting of the AISD Board of Trustees on May 14th at 6:05 PM. Apologize for the little bit late start. The board intends to make one of its scheduled meetings each month a work session. This meeting is a work session. It's AISD's common practice not to include open forum on work session agendas. No action or vote will be taken on any discussion topics. If any action or vote is taken, these topics will appear on future agendas as action or discussion items. And agendas will include open forums so that public may address the board. I want to thank everyone for coming out with us this evening. We will start our meeting with opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Kavasos in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion items. If you haven't silenced your cellphones, please do that. Our beepers, our iPads, our computers, our drinks back there, Mr. Murray, silence them all. Whatever you're spilling tonight, please keep them quiet.
It's just water.
That's fine. Well, you'll scrub the carpet later, right? At this time, we'll move into discussion item A, which we are luckily able to speak tonight. We want to thank the community for your support and the vote to be able to pass a bond election. This last Saturday, it was a huge sign and a huge vote of confidence for the district, and we want to thank you. At this time, we'll be in discussion item A, Dr. Kavasos', Bond Program Planning.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, we'd like to have Cindy to come up and discuss with us and kind of introduce this topic of our bond implementation. And it is nice to be able to see that bond implementation phase that we're moving into. And so they've been doing some work, staff with Jacobs, in planning and sequencing and things like that. And tonight, we'd like to have a discussion with the board about the process. Cindy?
Thank you, President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos. As has been mentioned, Saturday, voters, AISD voters approved a $663.1 million bond proposition. And there are a number of projects in that bond package. This is a five-year bond program, and so we know we have a lot of work ahead of us. So in the last two months approximately, the plant services staff, business office staff, and legal department have worked with Jacobs Project Management, the firm that did our facility assessment, to plan for the execution of this bond package. And so tonight, we want to share with you our work, where we are, and our plans for implementing the bond package. So the purpose of the work we've done for the last two months has been to enable us to start our work promptly. Again, five-year bond program, and we really don't have a day to waste. Also, to help us determine the most efficient way to deliver projects and to ensure that we have sound controls over our projects, good workflows internally to keep things running efficiently. We want to make sure that everything that we do is transparent and that the community has confidence in us to carry out the bond package that they have entrusted us with, and then to develop a successful roadmap for the bond package. Again, a five-year plan with a project or a proposition that's large, we have to make sure that controls are adequate and that we have a consistent procedure for everything from documentation to how we execute RFQs for architects, construction managers, the reporting that goes along with this, and then to make sure that we have the right oversight internally. So we focused on five particular areas, and you'll see them here. The first one is the form of agreement, or the standard contract that we'll use with architects and other professionals for design services and other professional consulting services. Also, the RFQ process for selecting professionals, and then looking at program and project controls and reporting of where we are, how we're expending funds from the bond package. And then, very important to us was the sequencing and the scheduling of the bond projects themselves, the phasing of the work, the cash flow associated with the projects, and making sure that that fits within our anticipated bond sales. And then, looking at how to package the different projects into bid packages. So with each one of these different tasks, if you will, we followed a common process, and that was that the Jacobs staff would come in and meet with us, and then they would present information on best practices to us on that particular task, ask us questions. We provided input. We provided a lot of our documentation to them for review. They would take that information, process it, bring back to us a draft document for our review or a draft schedule as appropriate. And then, we would give our feedback, our input, and it was just, you know, a constant flow of editing each other's suggestions and answering each other's questions until we finally have come back with a final document, a final recommendation, or a final schedule, if you will. There are two individuals here this evening from Jacobs that I'd like to introduce, and they may become involved at some point in the conversation. We have Christabel Lopez and Danilo Lopez, and we appreciate them being here this evening. So we'll go through each one of these and discuss in particular the work we've done and our recommendations and where we are right now. The first is the form of agreement, or that standard contract that we'll use with architects, engineers, and other professionals. The American Institute of Architects publishes a number of different standard contracts, and it's considered industry practice for all types of owners, if you will, to use these documents for construction projects, for architects, for the construction managers, the contractors. And there are various forms of contracts that they produce. So we've worked with Jacobs to identify a single project, or I'm sorry, a single agreement, AIA agreement, that will become our form agreement. Up to this point, when we do construction projects, we would tell, when we would go out and hire the architect, the engineer, we would tell them, "Give us the form document that you want to use, the AIA form document." We would take that then, give it to our legal department for review, and they would add to it an attachment of supplemental conditions that had been developed by the Tazby School Attorneys Group, and they would have to go through an extensive review process of that contract. And it was rather cumbersome and added time to the entire project because each one would be a little different, and it was almost like starting over with each project. So what we've done is identify a single AIA document, a B-101, that will be our standard form of agreement between us and the architects. And we took that document. Our legal department has embedded within the contract those items that had previously been considered supplemental terms and conditions. And then, we consolidated and reviewed other provisions within the contract to make sure that it specifically was tailored to Arlington ISD. We will also, we've also worked with Jacobs on a form agreement for other professional services, not just architects and engineers, but also geotech, material testing specialists and what have you. And they've given us a draft, or will be giving us a draft template for that. Again, a one-part document that embeds within it all of our required supplemental conditions to be used as that standard for all of our processes. This will help us be more efficient in processing out contracts as they're awarded, and will make sure that we have consistency between the different contracts on all of our projects. There were some other recommendations that Jacobs made to us out of this particular task. One of them included standardizing background checks. The law requires that anyone who comes on campus to do work in close proximity with children has to have a background check. And we have historically put that requirement in our RFQs and in our RFPs for contractors, that anyone who works on their jobs has to be badge, they have to have a background check. We have relied specifically on the contractor, on the architect, to do that background checks themselves, and we have not used or required a standard type of badge for those contractors. So the recommendation was that we take a little more ownership over that process, and we identify the company that the architects and the construction managers and their subs will go to to obtain those background checks. And then that company will do the background check and create the badge. So what you see here are sample badges. The different coloring will differentiate different kinds of individuals, whether it is the architect, or a contractor, or subcontractor will have, each one will have different colored badges, so we'll know what kind of a person, who they work for. And it will have our logo on it. That's something we have not required in the past. So an individual that's on our site will be very specifically identified by a badge as being cleared to be on our site. That background check company will provide the list of individuals back to us of who they have cleared. And so we'll have, I think, better controls over who is on our sites and how we can identify those folks. We also, as a recommendation here, that was that we define our approach to handling local vendors or minority women-owned businesses. And the question is, do we want to create a hub program, or do we want to give additional points in the evaluation system as we evaluate submissions for architects and for construction managers? And so that was the route we chose to go. We will be awarding additional points within that evaluation process to minority-owned businesses and local businesses. We have not set, we're not recommending that we set in board policy a hub policy. What we found is that there are not many other districts that do that, and it typically requires a great deal of additional administrative staff to maintain that. And so we think that we can achieve our objective by increasing participation through that evaluation process and giving additional points. Another recommendation out of this particular task was that we improve our payment schedule to design professionals. And this is referring to when we actually pay architects and what percent we pay them at different points in the job, not the amount that we pay them. When we do construction projects, we typically have been asking the architect to tell us what their payment terms will be, and that gets placed into our contract with them. So they dictate to us at what point we pay them different percentages of their fee. And so Jacobs had recommended to us that we take a look at that and that we standardize that, and we develop the payment schedule that we think is appropriate for our work. And so we have done that here. At their suggestion, we've allocated a larger percent of the fee to that construction phase where the architect has responsibility over the construction project and monitoring it. So this will now be inside of our RFQ, and it will be part of our contract. So people will know that here is, here's the payment schedule that you can expect from us. This will also help us in processing payments. We'll have a number of different jobs going at any one time. If we follow the practice we had been following, then we, in the business office and even in plant services, as we approve pay applications from architects, would have to stop down and go pull back out a contract to say, "Okay, this particular architect was going to bill us this percent at this point, and this other one was going to bill us a different percent at this point." It becomes rather cumbersome to manage. With one single payment schedule, then that helps us process our workflow much more efficiently, and it allows for consistent treatment of all of the contractors, all the design professionals. On request for qualifications, the purpose here was to make sure that when we issue an RFQ, that any potential offeror has the information that they need in that document to know what they're going to be evaluated on and what they need to submit back to us. It will also help us ensure consistency of the submissions that we receive and help us have a more equitable evaluation process across all of our proposers, and it will help us be more efficient in the process as well. In this particular process, Jacobs took our template, our RFQ template, that we historically use for design professionals. They made a number of suggestions and revisions to it, gave it back to us. Our entire staff, plant services, and the business office staff and purchasing staff met and reviewed the document and had some input that we gave back to Jacobs, and likewise, they gave input back to us until we have come to a final RFQ that we intend to issue. They, we have historically had four broad categories on which we have evaluated proposers or offerors. And so we've taken those four broad categories, and we've expanded them to 10 more specific categories, as you'll see here in just a minute. We have added some additional descriptors inside the RFQ of what it is we're looking for from the proposer in these submissions. And we've made sure that we've created a very defined submission layout that we're looking for, which will help us as we review these because we anticipate that we will receive a very large number of submissions for these projects. So again, we've expanded our evaluation criteria from four broad categories to 10 more specific There was also a recommendation that we have a committee review our submissions that we receive. In the past, we have historically interviewed everyone who submitted a proposal or qualifications in response to an RFQ. And the submission, or the recommendation here is that we not necessarily conduct interviews for all of our projects. We are going to conduct interviews for new construction, so the new elementary schools, career tech center, fine arts center, athletic activity centers, athletic complex, all of these new construction projects, we will perform interviews for those signature projects. But for the condition work that tends to be very consistent and routine across schools, then we will make those recommendations based on the evaluation of the data that they submit to us. We've defined the particular points to be awarded within each of these different categories. You can see the broad category representation here. Again, much more detailed than what we've been accomplished or accustomed to in the past. We'll include the criterion, the scoring evaluation matrix inside the RFQ, so individuals submitting to us will know what these, how these categories will be scored. There was a recommendation made that that review committee be made up of at least seven people within the district across different departments. We'll have representation on that evaluation committee from administration, also from plant services, at least two people there, finance, purchasing, curriculum and instruction, we'll have representative there, and technology. And so we'll have a broad range of interest represented on that selection committee. When we get our submissions, the first thing that we will do is we will evaluate the experience that they have reported to us. In these RFQs, the submitters are going to be asked to give us five projects, five, their representative best projects. Based on those projects that they give us, we will categorize them based on their experience into broad ranges of size of projects. Once we have categorized the architects, the engineers into these broad categories, then we'll go back and we will apply a detailed scoring matrix, we'll actually score each one, and then rank them within those categories. And then we will assign the projects to them, to each firm within that category. You can see here, there is a draft schedule for our intent to issue RFQs for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the bond program. Those two phases, the design work starts within about three months of each other. So immediately, we need to begin design work on the Phase 1 projects, and very shortly into the fall, we need to begin design work on the Phase 2 projects. So our recommendation is that when we issue these RFQs for this first round, we will be selecting architects and engineers for all of the projects in Phase 1 and Phase 2. The schedule that you see here is very much a draft. We've even had some conversation today about trying to compress some of this inside of the time period you see here, so that we come back to you on June 26 with recommendations for the projects in Phase 1, and then we'll come back to you at that first board meeting in August with recommendations on the Phase 2 architects. And so that's a conversation that is very fluid, and we've had even just today. We think that that will allow us more time in June to do interviews for the new construction work that is part of that Phase 1, those Phase 1 projects, which includes the career tech center, the activity centers, and the new elementary schools.
Ms. Powell, let's take just a second and answer a question or two.
Sure.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. This looks like a good time to take questions before we get into the financials.
Sure.
Okay. Can we go back some slides? Can you explain the map that's on that request for qualifications page?
Yes, and this is, again, we are selecting architects for Phase 1 and Phase 2, and you'll see the notation down here. The pointer's not, oh, it's not plugged in. In the dark blue box on the bottom right, RFQ will select architects for Phase 1 and Phase 2. That map is actually the Phase 1 project, so what you see circled there are projects, are schools that will have work done in Phase 1. This was just a graphic representation.
Okay, thank you.
Sample there.
Good. Can you go back one more slide now? On this payment, is, for example, that 25% for construction, is that paid all at once at the end of construction completely, or is it paid out throughout construction?
No, that will be paid, thank you, at the end, after that work is done.
It'll be paid out throughout.
Throughout, okay.
They'll draw, they'll draw most of it.
Yeah.
Well, let's let them answer.
Yeah, on all of the payment, really, we've got that separated into categories, and, you know, schematic design, design development, construction documents, construction phasing, and closeout phase. What the intent is, is that in each one of those phases, they'll draw as the work progresses. They'll invoice as this work progresses. And we know that on any one of those categories, it will never exceed that amount of money. So they'll, you know, this month, if we've got a 12-month project, they'll draw, and it's under construction, they'll draw, you know, 1/12 of that 25%.
So there's still going to be a lot of paying going on all the time.
Oh, yes, sir. It's going to be very active. Somebody, I'm glad you don't have to handwrite a check.
And if you'll go forward to the one about recommended architects evaluation criteria, that one, oh, this one? Yeah, that one. Do we think that the applicants will be that close that a three-point spread for a hub will make any difference at all for those folks?
And I don't think so. We've actually had some conversation about that even today, you know, and I don't think that that, because what they're looking for are their subs, their partners, and so it's a commitment from the firm when they submit their evaluation or their submission to us, their qualifications, as to what percent of their contract will be involved minority vendors. And so I don't think that that's going to dramatically sway one way or the other.
Well, and are we going to be able to ensure that we, in fact, do get hub vendors?
Yes.
At the sub-level then?
They'll have to submit that to us, yes.
Can I say something to that?
Yeah.
I think, Peter, that, you know, the staff put a lot of work into it with our consultants in looking at this. I think that the number of points allotted to each line is probably an area where, you know, this board is going to have some input on that because then you can specifically talk about that in terms of, I think the criteria is a good criteria. I think how many points each of these gets really is going to have the greater effect into what type of vendors we actually end up contracting. And so this is something that I shared with Dr. Kavasos earlier today about, we got to look at those points and the way that the points are distributed to make sure that at the end of the day, we end with a product in terms of the vendors that we want as a result of this, of this scorecard in essence. So I think that's where the detail is, and I don't know if we'll be getting into that tonight into greater detail, but certainly that is an area where we, as a board, and the discussions that we've had in terms of what we want to look for as, you know, as these contracts go out, I think that's where we could make a big impact.
I'm good. That's good.
Dr. Rush.
Thanks. I would agree with my colleagues in questioning. I'm hoping that we do address that. I think tonight's probably the best opportunity to talk about the points and the scorecard. I think that's why we're all here. So when we actually get to that specifically, I'd like to address that a little bit more. I do have some general questions at this point. With the security badges, I think that's great. Is that a standard practice then in other?
There are other large districts here in the area that are doing that, and I think it works well for them.
With the construction firms and the subs, has that proven to be disruptive to a workflow at any point in time? As far as things happen, people get sick, and they have to throw somebody else in off another job?
And I may ask Krista to speak to that. She's got experience with a number of districts.
Okay.
Thank you, Cindy, board members, Dr. Kavasos. In our experience with the two larger urban school districts in this area, they have implemented a similar system. And what contractors and architects and others do, they basically go and badge their personnel, I mean, more than the individuals that are directly involved. Because what they do, they move them around, and they usually, those are people that work on K-12 projects. So the deal that has been implemented with these companies that provide this service is that the first badge is about $50. Then any other badges that are for additional school district only cost $5. The idea is not to disrupt the process, not to make it more expensive for those vendors, but to make sure that they really go through the criminal background check and the drug testing is included. And the other thing, and Cindy did a great job covering, but one thing that is important to mention is a yearly process. In other words, not because you are batched today, that means you are blessed for five years. This is a process that has to be renewed on a yearly basis, and it has not been disruptive in our experience. And it gives you a good idea of the impact that the district is making in the economy of the city and the place. As an example, in Dallas, they reach up to 20,000 individuals badge at some point in the peak of the program. That doesn't mean 20,000 people employed all at the same time, but through the duration of the program, 20,000 heads of families got work. And for work, they reach about 12,000. So that gives you also an idea of the impact that the district is having on the economy. Thank you, Cindy.
And what Krista's referring to there is, what they had shared with us is that the firm doing the background checks, they will supply us the list of people that they have run the checks on. And so that was just kind of a side benefit, was to be able to say, "Here's the impact to our local economy from these projects."
Erin, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I have comments because we spent like three hours in a subcommittee, in a committee meeting earlier this week, but a couple of things that I also are good to point out is that there is competition among firms that provide this service. It's not just a one service, one company that's getting all these, all these jobs. So there's competition there, there's multiple providers. And also, this is pretty standard practice in industry, that if you're expected to show a badge, the person that's expecting you to be badge really has the control. And that would give us the control again, because right now, we don't have that control. They could have a, you know, a badge that isn't as good as what we'd want them to have. And so this really gives us more control without putting any undue burden on the contractors or any additional cost, or funneling them all to one particular vendor that's going to, you know, really, you know, supply all these badges. So there's multiple vendors, competition, to make sure that we have competitive pricing there, and I do think it improves the security quite a bit.
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely. I appreciate that. Very good. The other question that I have is, on the payment schedule, the task one of the recommendations is setting the parameters on the schematic design, design development, all those different percentages. Is that common practice, acceptable to architects? This isn't anything new. I would assume that we're benchmarking things, and those percentages themselves.
We typically have them give us their schedule.
Okay.
So that is very common, yeah.
And so the percentages themselves are agreeable and commonplace. They're, we're not going to have a large number of firms. not going to have a large number of firms saying, well, don't really want to participate because this, this payment structure is really not going to be supportive of our practice and our business. Okay, good. Okay. I have maybe one. Oh, could you go through the, when they come in for the interview, the selection committee, again?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We want representation across all the different stakeholders within the district, if you will. We will have representation from administration, which generally will be myself, and then also at least two people from plant services.
Okay.
We'll have representation from finance and from purchasing. We will have individuals from curriculum and instruction, and also from technology.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that broadens the scope there. Good. And if you could give me a little bit of clarification on how we're going about this for this bond implementation, they're going to be, as part of the RFQ process, going to be asked to provide five projects, and then from there, you're going to divide these firms into different categories?
Right, and that is one component of what they're asked to give us as part of their submission, their qualifications. They give, and we asked them today even, previous projects, give us projects of similar scope. So in this case, what we will ask them for, every one, give us five. Give us five projects representative of your skill set, your experience. And so what they should be giving to us are their five best projects. And so we will look at those when the submissions first come in, and we will say, okay, this particular firm has experience designing elementary schools. And based on the typical value of a new elementary school, then they get plugged into this particular dollar category. Or they have experience doing MEP work, or renovation work. So they get plugged into a different category based on the size, the typical size of those projects. Once we've put everybody in those big buckets, if you will, then we'll go through and use the scoring evaluation matrix, and we'll score them and rank them within their category.
Okay, so if...
Krista, if you want to add anything to that?
Let me ask another question while she's coming. So does that mean that if Firm A has, is a large firm, and they have experience in K-12 extensively with elementary schools, with athletic facilities, performing arts facilities, are they going to be in multiple categories then, or are they going to be in one, we can handle it all kind of category? How's that work?
Normally, what you do, you will place them in the largest category, because usually an architectural firm will want to get as much work as they can. I mean, the largest size of project, that will give them the largest fee. So you will rank those largest firms in the range that applies to the maximum volume of work. And then smaller firms will rank the first one, and so on. So as Cindy said, as, once you go through the scoring in detail, the 10 evaluation items, that will total 100, that's the maximum you can get. Then the firms that gets 98 will be number one within that range, and the one that gets 96, and then so on. So you're going to see, as part of Task Five, what we did was to develop the packaging and the procurement strategy. You're going to see how we had grouped the projects together in 43-bit packages that offers different ranges of projects, from less than 2 million, from two to five, until more than 25. So now you're going to be pairing those firms within those ranges with those projects. As the projects become available, Firm Number One get the first bit package that comes out on that range of projects. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I guess, I'd like to add too, while Krista's here, she can speak to this again, that the architects in this area, this is a very familiar scoring process within that some of the other bigger districts have used.
Yes. I like to say also that the first recommendation that we provided in the area of selection of architects was the multiple selection, because the district was used to a process where the projects were issued the RFQs for individual projects. But imagine the time that takes to go out, one by one. You have 111 projects right now, in group in 43-bit packages. So imagine 43 solicitations out. Then that means the three-weeks process, the evaluation, the committee will sit 43 times to look at that, then go through the interview, then negotiate the contract. It was really a very time-consuming. For a bond of this magnitude, you have to select and move together. For a phase, and in this case, because the two phases are so close together, we're selecting architects for two phases, which is over $250 million worth of work to have an idea. So in order to make that process effective, that's when the range is gone. The idea is to spread out the work to all of the firms that are qualified. Doesn't mean that everybody that submitted will get work, but everyone that is qualified, that has the experience, and that has done good work, gets ranked, and is prioritized within their rank, and they will probably get assigned work, which guarantees the spread out of the work in a fair way, in accordance with their qualifications, their experience, and the past performance.
That's good. And that's definitely something I think we've been looking for, a more efficient process that does share the wealth and isn't wasting, not wasting, but taking so much of your time.
And I think this will let us share the wealth, yeah.
Good. Okay, I think that's all I've got at this point. We can continue on. Thanks for being patient with me.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Mr. Pomp and Dr. Reisch mentioned it. This may be the time to discuss the evaluation form, if you all want to dive into that a little bit.
Yeah.
Ms. Powell, starting off, would you just kind of maybe break it down to everyone of how things were chosen on these categories?
On the, these categories are on the scoring, the evaluation form.
The evaluation.
The evaluation form.
Let me, I think we've got a copy of one here that I can, let's see here. Yep, let's see here. All right. Within those broad ranges, we've allocated points, and we will look at specific criteria to score a firm in these particular areas. For example, under a firm profile, we're going to look at where the firm is located, the years they've been in business, any sort of litigation that they've had. A big area to us is the project experience. And always, we have placed a great deal of importance on design professionals that have done work similar to the particular project we're looking for. And so with the sample projects that they submit, they'll submit five, and we will go through and look at those and ask specific questions, and have they had any specific experience with the Design and Career Tech Center, Performing Arts Center, Aquatic Center, Multipurpose Activity Center. So we have some very definite criteria to help guide us as we evaluate an individual firm's submission and score that. That will be a total of 15 points. This next category is important to us because we want to see how they approach a project. We want to assess their success in not disrupting school. Many, many, most of these projects, as a matter of fact, will take place while school is in session. And so we look to see experience that firms may have in carrying out a construction project in an occupied facility, most especially a school facility, without disrupting operations. So that will be an important part. Personnel, we want to see who is assigned to our project and what their experience is. The project manager is key. The construction manager is also very, or construction administrator is also a very key part of that team. And so we want to see what sort of experience those individuals have, what sort of education experience that they have. Workload, we need to assess the work capacity of these firms to take on work. So we look at the size of their team and their proposed team resources to make sure that they have the capacity to take on our work. And then we want to look at the consultants that they will use, the civil engineers, the structural engineers, and MEP food service consultants are always a biggie with new construction. And then, and some of our projects will require acoustical work, so we want to know who they will bring to the, to the team, so to speak, for acoustics work. Then, looking at experience that the architect has had in working with a construction manager at risk arrangement, and their experience with those particular projects. And then we have also asked for experience in prototypical design, where this may become very important to us with the Activity Centers, the Multipurpose Activity Centers, where we'll build six of them at individual schools. So it will most likely be a prototypical design. There'll be one design that's replicated to fit the site at each of our other five high schools. And then their hub participation, their commitment to the firms that they will bring to partner with them for these projects. And then references is also very key. We put a lot of stock in references. So that's, that's an important component for us.
All right. I have a, excuse me, several different questions, and maybe for efficiency and lack of redundancy, maybe we could go through each section as a group, maybe, together? I know, I'll make some general points, but rather than me asking all of mine, and then somebody else coming in with each thing, just trying to streamline it a little bit.
I agree. Ask yours a question, Dr. Reisch, and then if someone has one that's directly in that same section.
Okay.
Let's go ahead. Dr. Reisch, do you mind if I say something just kind of overall before we get into it?
Go ahead.
Because I think once we get into this, I have to leave at about 7:15. I have a function to attend to tonight, and so I want to make sure I say this before I leave.
Well, I'm more than happy letting you go first, if you will. Go for it.
Mr. Pomp, you've got the floor.
Thank you. And I chaired this, this committee, and I just really want to, first of all, recognize the work of our team that they've, they've done to really prepare for, for this bond. And I shared it with them, and we had the meeting last week, I believe. And, you know, we didn't want to be, we didn't want to jinx the election, but we knew we had to be ready. And I'll tell you, every time that we've challenged our staff with a bigger project, and they've responded. And what they've done in responding to this challenge of being prepared for a bond of this magnitude, so that from the day that election occurred, to be able to go to an RFQ within, within a week's time for such a large bond is magnificent. And they've elevated the level of the team to something that, you know, I couldn't have imagined. So first of all, congratulations. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for, you know, just elevating your game. And I know that our consultants helped a ton, and we appreciate that you guys do this all the time. So again, congratulations to the board for having the vision to say, yes, we need, do need to bring a great team to, to help us prepare. But I go back to our staff. There's plenty of staff that would have been kind of pushing back, well, this is the way we do things, or this is the way we've always done things. I didn't get a sense of that ever being done at all. More in, great, you're bringing us a better product, a better process, better systems, better tools. We're eager to take them on so that we can elevate our game and perform at a higher level. And that's great for y'all. I mean, that tells us, tells us a great deal about the quality of staff. So I wanted to make sure that that was said before we get into this. Now, I also said that this evaluation form is probably the most important piece that we'll evaluate today. It's going to drive the work for the next five years, frankly. We may, this board may choose to work on it a little bit more, but this is where we can make sure that the practices that the administration follows reflects the values of this board. And this is something that we've talked a good bit, you know, with other things, but making sure that it reflects the values of the board. And this, this board really reflects the values of the community, since we're elected officials. So I think it's critical. I think it's, it's good that we'll spend a good bit of time on it. I think the staff identified the right criteria, the right priorities. I think the way it's weighted is how we're going to have our input in terms of what's more important, or what do we, what do we believe is less important. So with that being said, Dr. Reisch, I'll see the floor to you, and you can begin your questions. So I've spent a lot of time on this since I, since I received it, and with the staff as well, so.
All right. I couldn't agree more. It's, we're so happy and blessed to have such a great, a great team, great staff, great board, great superintendent. This is a very collegial. I, one of the areas, well, I guess, before I go into specific items, I just want to clarify, with having the CM at Risk Experience tab H, does that mean that we are changing our process to where the architect is primarily going to have a CM at Risk identified as, as a response to their RFQ, or we're still, that's still another process?
It's more looking for their experience with that type of procurement for the construction method.
Okay.
And that, that arrangement, that relationship there. I don't know if you want to speak to that, or?
Okay, that's great. Being reflective of our will, our community, I know one of the things that I've been a proponent of is what can we do to make sure we have local, not necessarily preference, but consideration given, and hub consideration as well. And my goal at the end of the day with this is that if somebody has not awarded something as far as work, that they, they can feel very comfortable that they were in a fair, equitable process. And I've, I think this, this gets us very close to that. I do think the weighting is a little bit questionable on some things. With the local, Ms. Powell, on the hub, you mentioned that a score of three isn't really necessarily going to change a lot.
And I think, and let me clarify, my, my thought there is that I think that, given the level of participation that would generate that score, I think that it's easily achievable. And so I think that we will have many people who get that three points. And so, big firms, little firms, what have you.
Okay. Okay, I'm still processing that. I, I guess with the local as well, if we're giving, the way this reads, five total points, I don't know if, personally, I'm thinking there's more opportunity to maybe change that point scale. And I, I dovetail that with the second criteria of 15 points as far as K-12 experience. One of the things that I've brought up in the past is the ideas of, maybe we go outside our comfort zone, maybe we go outside K-12. Maybe there's a firm that hasn't necessarily done specific K-12 projects, related projects, but they're innovators in different areas, whether it's sports complex design, performing arts design as examples. And they don't necessarily do K-12 work that would give us innovation and that leapfrog to a world-class facility that the typical mold doesn't, doesn't even know could exist. And if we're putting 15 points weight on that experience, I think maybe we're, we're excluding those, those potentials from occurring. And with the local, if there's five, five points there, that's not necessarily enough to make it or break it. If somebody, if two competing firms are very similar, I don't know that that five points is going to make it to where that local firm is going to achieve that, that contract. And I know this has been very difficult, the idea is to get the best qualified. That's definitely it at the end of the game. That's what we want, what is best for our district. I'm just hoping, it seems to me that maybe we could tweak these numbers just a little bit and still achieve that outcome, and yet still satisfy some of our, our ideas on giving more opportunity and more consideration for those local firms, and maybe outside the box on innovation besides K-12. That's, I guess that's all I'll say for now, just in essence of time, and I'll open it up, let other people comment on those ideas.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Mr. Hibs.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Appreciate your work on this. I've got a couple of questions. I guess I would dovetail on that last piece that Dr. Reisch put out. This evaluation piece, is this one that Jake This evaluation piece, is this one that Jacobs have brought towards us of, of what you're, you're seeing typical in the industry?
Yes, sir. This is, this is an evaluation form that is very typical in the industry. However, the points change dramatically. While the categories remain the same, in most districts for similar bond programs, the points, the board is absolutely right. The decision on how to allocate the points is really, you know, the board and, and the staff decision. We did not contribute specific points for each of the categories. We share what we have seen other districts do. And then the points were allocated based on that conversation with, with staff failed that the board was going to entertain. But it's certainly your, your decision on points.
Okay. Before I get back to you, Ms. Powell, let me ask Mr. Pompah this. Mr. Pompah, as y'all were discussing the point system, the valuation system, what input did the committee, what was your discussion around it? I want to make sure this, this is clear so we have a.
We didn't get a chance to get into the point system. And, and actually, we really felt as a committee that it was appropriate for the entire board because this is such a huge tool and it, and it's going to have such a huge impact. We felt that that discussion of points really needed to occur with the entire board. So the points that you see up there are the points that came directly from the staff without any input from the committee. Again, our, our, what, what we identified as a committee was that it was, this was a bigger discussion than a committee discussion and we really needed to bring it to y'all so that the entire board would discuss it in an open session, so that the public is aware of how we arrived at the priorities that we arrived and how we weighted the things that we weighted. Did not want to have that discussion in, in a, in a closed meeting with only three, three committee members, so.
I appreciate the foresight and that's why I asked the question. I just wanted to make sure that we, we understood how we got to the point that we are. I'm going to, I'll be straightforward and candid. I, knowing how to appropriately weigh these points, I don't know. It's not my forte. I'm, I work in sales. I'm not someone that works, you know, in the distribution of jobs or allocating these other things. So in a way, I've got to rely on the administration and the experts that we, that we've had from Jacobs. Do you want to interject?
Yeah, I think I, I'm going to suggest to use the other form that is in the presentation that has the topics and the points to make it easier to look at the overall, because this form has several line items, so it's kind of confusing. If we can look at it in one place, perhaps it's easier. And, and the other thing I wanted to add is usually the points that the board has more input on are in the two topics that you discussed already. How much are you going to weigh the local participation? That's one. And two, how much is the hub? The rest of the point is easy to allocate. Once you make a decision on, on how, you see, those are the 10 criteria items that total 100 points. Usually on their firm profile is where you find the points that you will allocate for a local firm. And, and usually what you do, I mean, just to give you an example, if you have five points for, for local, you say five points to an Arlington firm or a DFW firm, you know, three points if it's a state of Texas firm. I mean, that's the way, kind of the criteria, how it goes. And then the other, the other area where the boards have a lot of input on is in hub. How mu, how much of those points will be allocated? The rest of the points, we can work with staff and allocate it and so it's fair, it goes to personnel, experience, workload. We, we can help with that as long as you determine those two items.
And if I could interject, I know that, that as we've worked through projects before, experience is always the key area with us. The personnel that they bring to the job is key and references are key. So, you know, absolutely, these points can be adjusted.
And that's, that's where it comes back to.
Mr. Epps, can I comment, make a comment real quick on, on the point that you made? And I, and I think none of us are experts. I don't, I don't think anybody is really in the construction industry here. And, and I think it goes back to what is it that we want to see as a result of, of this in terms of the, the type of contracting that we have? And so what's our, what are our priorities, right? We already know, and I know, that this entire board wants the best quality and the best value, bar none. And, and, you know, I think there's enough capacity within our North Texas, Tarrant County area to, to achieve that, you know, with, with, with however we distribute the firm profile or hub participation. So we already know that that's kind of fixed. And outside of that, what are the other priorities that we want to have? Do we want, as Dr. Reich said, more innovation with maybe, you know, not necessarily K-12 experience? Do we want to, do we want to say, we want to see more of that? And if we do, then we have to weigh that appropriately. Do we want to see more local participation? Do we want to see more hub participation? I think those are the three areas that we say, how important are those to us? And so we don't have to get into, totally into the weeds. We can't. But, you know, if, if we just hear from the board, what are those areas that are really important? How important are they to us? Then either the committee and the administration, we can go back and, and get a little bit more into the weeds and say, okay, well, based on that, now that we know from the board that, you know, this is the level of interest that we have from the board, we can, you know, make some recommendations on, on the more detailed line items.
Okay. Again, for myself, I'm looking at it at 20,000 feet. I'm not trying to get into the, to, to the weeds. Ultimately, my number one goal here is I would love to see the absolute best value for the district. We talk about that all the time. But in light of how, another thing that I, I think that's important for our community is that they don't want to see issues arise that we've seen in a neighboring district, even just with the sports venue. What, when it comes down to it, this evaluation piece, for me, is does the evalu, evaluation form identify, you know, down to the subcontractors, and it looks like it does, to ensure that, you know, that they've have, haven't had any type of contractual, you know, issues. Those things that, you know, can't be hidden just because they gave us good references from other projects. I just want to, that supersedes everything else to me, whether it be a local company or someone that's from Nebraska. I, I just want to make sure that the quality of work is done in a way that's going to be structurally sound and provide the best value for the, for the community. And then, you know, these other pieces, absolutely, if we can, if we can weigh in on those things, that's fine. I just would tell you that I, I, I feel that I'm, I'm somewhat astute, but I can't tell you what that, that number amount is. And, you know, I, I, I really rely more on the administration on this one.
If I could insert, maybe to address something that Dr. Reich said, you know, one thing we may be able to do in that experience category is restructure that a little and we'll have to have conversation, but so that it's more project, comparable project experience. So if it's an elementary school, then certainly you're looking at someone who's got that experience with an elementary school versus somebody, a performing arts center. Maybe it's not, as you said, maybe it was on a university campus or for a city and not, not just for K-12, but maybe just something as simple as that, but that still lets us put that weighting on that, that direct experience that's comparable to the project that we're seeking.
Ms. Powell, I see lots of nodding heads up here, so I think that would be a.
Take that as you.
I did have one last thing. I, I just wanted.
Mr. Epps, go ahead.
I know that when we went with the, putting the astroturf on the, or the, the turf on the different fields, we had a firm that had already had a bid out through the state where they did it from architect to finish. Are those, are, are we going to be looking to use those state bids, I guess, in the same manner? Are these people going to be individually doing RFQs?
When we get into the construction part of this, and our next step after we get these RFQs out will be to determine procurement methods on how we're going to procure the projects in phase one and two. And I think that was a rather unique project and, and from a timing perspective, had we had the time, would we have used that method? I don't know. That would have been your decision. But we see that, see it a bit differently now. You know, I think the vast majority of our camp, of our projects are going to be multiple campuses and multiple types of work. And so that's going to have to be organized and managed a bit differently because that was, that's really the work that happened there. And, and when we come back with, with procurement method, you know, if we've got a single trade project where there's just one item of work or one type of work, then maybe we can look at those kind of issues. But I think, you know, the way we've got everything packaged, there's a little bit of everything in these packages. So I don't think in, in our particular case, in most of these projects, that we'll be in a situation to do that. There could be a few when we get down to the, you know, junior high athletic piece, you know, where we've got lighting and tracks. We could look at something like that, you know, down the road. And right now, we've got those kind of special things and all the deficiency work that goes into a junior high in one, in one project for that school. So, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it. And that's what our goal is. We want to try to make sure that we're, that we're really recommending the best value to the district regardless of what method that might be. And I think through our experience, I think we can, we can certainly, certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Mr. Pompah, you're like, you're actually up next if you, I know you've already gone, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and I'm going to go in about 10 minutes. So there is, since, you know, I think that, I want to follow up on what Dr. Reich said that, you know, in, in terms of points, my, my own, I guess, value system would say, I'd like to see more points given to the local firms. I don't think, you know, a, a fraction of those five points, as you have it set up and broken down where you're going to consider the location, the years in business and litigation or claims, all make up the five points, which means the actual location of the, of the firm's headquarters is going to be a part of that. It's, it's not enough for me. I'd like to see that beefed up a little bit so that we can make sure that, all things being equal, again, first, it's, it's quality. If you got, if, if you've controlled for quality, right, and experience, and you have two companies, you have one in Fort Worth and we have one in Houston, and, you know, those are pretty similar, I want to make sure that that firm in Fort Worth has a little bit of advantage so that we continue to keep our, our, our dollars, our tax dollars here in our local community. So to me, that, that's, that's a valuable thing and I, I don't believe that the point system that we have there is, is enough. I think on the hub participation, it's also not enough. The way we have it structured right here, you can neg, negate the hub participation just because of some of the other things in terms of using partners that you've always used in the past. You get points for that. And if those partners are not hub partners, you know, you can say, I'll go get a hub partner, but it's not any more points than if you continue to use the same hub partner that you used in the past. And so, or the same construction partner that you've used in the past. So I, I'd like to beef that one up a little bit to make sure that we do have some strong hub participation as part of, as part of this. But that's secondary to me to the, to the local participation. And again, that's all after we control for quality and experience. I would like the opportunity for some innovation specifically in areas where we can. Sports, sports facilities, you don't have to have built a K-12 sports facility to know how to build one really good. The, the performance centers, I think that's, that's also the same thing. The aquatic centers, I'm thinking of, of those things that, you know, there's any number of construction firms that maybe don't have K-12 experience that, you know, if, if the people, I, I shared this earlier with Dr. Reich, if the people that built the Winspear Opera House wanted to come bid on this, you know, I wouldn't say they're not qualified, but they, they wouldn't get those, you know, 10 or 15 points for having K-12 experience. So, you know, I, I think that we have to allow for, for that quality to, to come in. Another one that I do want to talk a little bit about, because I don't understand it well enough, and we've been given some information, and I think Crystal was going to give us a little bit more information on where we go with sealed bid proposals versus a construction manager at risk. And I want to understand that a little bit, and I, I have a feeling that most of us up here don't understand that. There's some information that the, the cost of, of construction has gone up a little bit higher with the CMR than with the sealed bid proposals. And there's a, you know, there's some reasons for, for either one. And so I wanted Bob to maybe share that a little bit with us so that I can understand better and hopefully the rest of my team can understand that.
One of the things that we intend on doing when we do bring procurement methods back to you for approval, we're going to do some pros and cons. Tell you the advantages and the disadvantages and, you know, kind of go back through that whole procurement process that we do. There are great advantages in construction management at risk. There are some advan, there are advantages in, in competitive seal proposal. And so we will point those advantages and disadvantages out to you. You know, some of the studies that I've seen will take your initial contracted cost as, and compare those. At the end of the day, what we're worried about is what it costs us at the end, not what we proposed in, in the beginning. And so we'll do some of those kind of comparisons where we can get that. So I think there, that, that is our plan, to do that. And I think we've got, you know, two, two methods to consider. And my goal is to get the best value. What we found out in the past that, that we feel like we get a better value when we've got those single trade jobs, or maybe not, but one or two trades, where we do a CSP. We feel like in these big projects with a CM at risk, they are so intricate in the phasing of the individual projects and the planning that goes into that as far as the scheduling of what they're going to do next. And, and I'll, I, I won't, I'll just, just a quick preview of what we'll do. But from that perspective, we get those people on board early. They're working, looking over their architect's shoulder through the whole process. They're intimately, they have intimate knowledge about the projects prior to starting the projects. That's one of the great advantages because we've got, we've got a lot of moving parts and pieces that go into each, each project at each campus and each inside of, in, each project inside of each package. And so there's a great advantage to use in CM at risk because, again, they're on the front end and they're going through the planning process. They have the details of it. Conversely, on C, on CSP, competitive seal proposal, those contractors don't see anything until we put out a, a proposal document. They hadn't been involved in anything. So then they don't, we don't get the advantage of having a contractor's background and experience on how to, how to phase and schedule projects. They don't see it until we put a document out and, you know, three weeks later, we open those proposals and award a contract. So that's just basic and we're going to, like I said, our, our intent is, is to kind of do, kind of review of the procurement process, you know, the, the methods available to us and try to come up with some objective pluses and minuses for both. And both of them have advantages and disadvantages.
Mr. Pompah, Ms. Solzner, one.
Ms. Powell, if I could add in, because I've looked at also some data on the cost differential, but I'm concerned that sometimes it doesn't include both internal and external cost. And so, you know, I'm not sure that if it has, if it's really a total cost comparison on the cost advantage of one versus the other, since it doesn't, since it may require a lot more in-house staff to, to manage one versus the other. So I've been a little bit concerned about some of that data. So I'm not sure, and it may, but the data that I've seen, I haven't found any source that says it includes total cost, internal and external and final cost.
And I think that's, that's fair and I'm, I'm glad that Bob is, is planning on bringing that information more objectively to us so that, or to this board so that this board can evaluate that and, and make a decision. I think that we're probably going to have, I've seen that a lot of the big school districts use competitive seal bids quite a bit, CSPs. Now, I expect that there's going to be some, right? Some are going to be a CSPs.
I would expect, yes. I think.
As many projects as we have, there's going to be a good amount. And so then I, I come back to, to this evaluation form where we're giving 10 points for a firm that has experience with CM at risk and maybe firms that don't have.
We haven't had made that decision.
Okay. Or, or, you know, there's some points allocated to firms that, you know, are, have that experience versus firms that usually work with more. have that experience versus firms that usually work with more sealed bid proposals. So again, going back to the points that, you know, we may not want to allocate as much weight to that category, or not have that category if-
Or any points.
Yeah, or any points at all, if we expect that we're going to be dealing with architects that need to have experience with both. So that's why I brought it up, because it impacts this, this particular-
Okay, I understand that.
-criteria here.
I understand.
With that, I'll leave you guys to have the rest of the fun, and I'm going to go have dinner with my 11-year-old, with my daughter who's turning 11 years old today, and we're having dinner with her. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Pomp. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Just a couple of things. On the line that says K-12 project firm experience, can we make everybody happy if we said K-12 project and general firm experience?
Mr. Barron, I would recommend, why can't it just say relevant experience?
Well, we do wind off there, building schools, specifically, but otherwise, general.
Here's why, Mr. Barron. I would say relevant experience, because I think Mr. Pomp had a good example on the Fine Arts Center, maybe, and on the, the Aquatic Center, those two things. But I think K through 12 experience makes a huge difference on our classroom expansions. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, that's good.
If, if that's just saying relevant project experience-
Relevant experience to this project, because-
Because then it would list each of those projects, and y'all would be able to rank them based on those projects, because adding these science classrooms during school time during the year is important to really to have K through 12 experience.
We don't want to exclude people that don't have K-12 experience, if they have experience other places. So I'm okay with changing it to reflect, tell us what you got.
Yeah, and I think we can capture that.
Okay. The second thing is, I guess it's for the board, is it the intent of the board to funnel jobs directly to the local community with sufficient points to make sure that happens?
I would, earlier this evening, I think Mr. Hibs, Dr. Rice, and Mr. Pomp has said, quality comes first for me. Quality becomes, comes before everything else that, that we have, we get the deliverable that we need, the schedule we need, the quality we need, the cost we need. Now, if all of that is equal, if all of that is equal, I think there is, yes, I think that it is good that we keep dollars in our local economy. But without question, a far, by far, number one is quality, so.
Well, then, what would you suggest we do with that five points for firm profile, which is location? Leave it at five? Make it something else?
I was thinking about that, Mr. Barron, and the points as they are on this page, and I was curious what maybe other districts have had exceptionally executed bond programs across the state. Because I know Krista with Jacobs, we have a tremendous resource here. Krista has a lot of background in what other districts have done, what their successes have been. I don't, I don't, you know, I'm looking at right now, just a form that has a number five. I don't have anything to gauge it to.
We have seen an average of 10 in that category. And for the hub category, we have seen an average of 10 as well.
A range of up to 10 or an average?
Average. I mean, let me give you an example specific. Fort Worth is 10 in hub participation, Dallas is 20.
Okay.
And, but other districts are less, so an average, I would say 10. And it is hard because the criteria is not identical, but in trying to make an effort to help in the conversation, I think the average for hub is 10, and the average for firm profile that includes the location of the firm is 10 as well.
This is average through the state or average?
Through the state. I, I mean, I work in Florida as well, but normally I don't kind of relate and put that, I mean, I stay with Texas. The other information that the finance committee asked from us the day of the meeting was if school districts in Texas include the actual evaluation form in the RFQ. We researched Houston and San Antonio, as you suggested, and they don't.
Okay.
So that is consistent with Dallas and Fort Worth. They include, general information, actually, less information than that. They include the criteria, not necessarily the points, but definitely the form, the actual evaluation form is not included. So that's information that we owe you, that you asked for.
Right, we asked for that in committee, because we talked a lot about some large area districts, because we wanted to reach out and also know what was the practice in Houston and San Antonio, some other areas that had some very large and successful-
That is correct.
-bond program. So with that being said, your question, Mr. Barron, was what would we want to do with, with that one? And so if the state average is 10 and we're at 5, I would like to be closer to the average.
And Ms. Solz, overall, we're at 8, and the state average is 20 on those two categories. And just before jumping anyone else, I'd say getting a little closer to that 20, I think, would be something I would recommend. Doesn't matter which area you look at, how it's broken down, I think we need to get a little closer. But then I would ask back to Ms. Powell, is 20% of a non-quality judge too much of a percent to judge on a non-quality factor? Because I think we all appear agree-
You're saying a total of 20.
It is getting, but I think that, you know-
No, no, I'm saying total of 20, because 100 points, and we're sitting here talking about, you would, we're at 8% right now of the total score. It would go up to 20% of the score. I get worried, is that too much non-quality factor being part of the judgment factor?
Truly, I think that is, in addition to quality. Just because we've asked for them to, we've assessed value to these, doesn't mean that those people aren't going to be quality. Now, we do have criteria that does judge their experience, both from the prime, the architect, and also from his consultants. So they're still going to be judged on their quality regardless of whether-
Oh, I agree 100% with that, Mr. Carlisle. I'm just saying, if you broke it down to categories of ranking on quality basis of just the judging, you've got 80% that are based on some form of-
Basic quality.
...quality, and then you didn't have 20% or 8% that we have right now, it's not a quality factor if you're just looking at those categories.
I think- Yeah, I have a clarification, Mr. Hogg. Out of the 10 points for firm profile that we're saying is an average, some of those points are for the local. It's only about three points, maybe. The other seven are quality. They relate to their number of claims or litigation issues.
Okay, that's fair.
And they relate to the number of years the firm has been in business, which means, yeah.
I would agree.
So you're about at 13, that probably, three that will be to local and 10, or maybe less than 10 for hub.
Something that Mr. Hibs brought up earlier, and I think is good too, and this is, this is such an outstanding form, and one of the reasons this committee wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to look at it, is that, you know, kind of staying at that 20,000 feet, is it helpful that we say this evening, these are things that we think need, you know, let's, let's look at it again, and maybe administration could come back to us with, with another point system, have them more time to vet out and think deeper into it. It's just a suggestion.
And Ms. Solz, I would agree with that, because right now, we're at 8%, and I would tell you, have the administration look, and to my mind, somewhere 10 to 20, I think, is-
What, we have a-
It would be a thought process.
We have a suggestion here, because this came up on the CM at risk experience. Maybe we could eliminate that category entirely, take those 10 points, move five of it to the hub, add it to the five that are already there, so that gives us 10 points in hub, and take five of those points and move them to firm profile, to give us 10 points under firm profile.
And Ms. Powell, I think we have time to bring it tomorrow night in a quick discussion, so I don't want you to be locked into a number. I want y'all to be able to talk it through, and really, you can have a good morning discussion and make some of those terminations. I don't, I think Mr. Hibs got a great point. None of us up here are construction experts. We're, we're up here to try and give what we think's the best value and quality to the district, what we think the community wants. And so that's what we're trying to do. I, we're going to take y'all's recommendation, but we'd ask you to think about it.
Well, when you think it through, you know, what we, you know, what I've told you, that we're going to bring back procurement methods, we haven't selected those yet. You haven't approved those yet. So I think probably we'd be best served if we did take that CM at risk experience out of it.
Okay.
Because all of them are going to have both experiences.
Right.
Now, we're going, we're going to discuss this again tomorrow night, because tomorrow's discussion again.
Without a doubt, it is.
Without action.
So we don't have to set things in stone tonight.
No, and we haven't seen the full picture here of, all these bidders are going to get prescreened and put into categories. So a whole lot of companies are going to get jobs out of this, right?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Dr. Rice.
The, while you're looking at this and vetting this out to bring back to us, I don't know if it exists, but if there's districts that have had this type of an objective in mind to drive, you know, quality first and after quality, where they've actually successfully driven the, the business more towards local, if there's any kind of data that you might have on that, that would be helpful for the staff, because that's ultimately what we're looking for.
Yeah, this conversation is deja vu. It's basically the district, that's what they're looking for. Quality first, and then emphasis on local, because they realize, I mean, the taxpayers that are supporting this bond program are local companies.
Yeah, and I would go, we're going quality and then local. I still believe that we have to make sure that we're getting the best value, too.
Yeah.
So you go quality, best value, local.
Yeah.
Let's not jump all the way, you know.
I would throw quality and value in there together.
And I think local is part of best value, right? Because it's what the community wants. So local, it's not, the local is not part of best value. It, it, that also counts in terms of best value in the eyes of the community and, and the public.
Absolutely. Well, and the other thing, Mr. Hibs, is this is RFQ, so there's, ideally, the numbers aren't discussed. RFP would have the numbers in there as far as value. RFQ is supposed, it's supposed to be strict qualification based on-
As you all know, professional services for the state of Texas are selected based on qualifications only. And then after you make the selection, then you negotiate price and fees and all that.
The, the other point that I, I want to bring up is, let's say, there's local firms that are smaller, they don't have the experience, but they're able to partner with a larger firm that does. I, I want to make sure that they have equal opportunity passing that quality test for the local as well, that, whether that's in the scoring sheet or communicated in the RFQ, that they, they are considered pretty much on equal playing field as local versus just one small firm that's looking at a whole different scope of service.
Yes. What we have seen done in that case is the percentage that the local firm is on the whole team, really that's what they contribute. Let's say that you're evaluating the local factor, and it's three points, just to put a number to it. But that firm is only a third of the, of the whole team. They get one point out of the three. It, it really is associated to the percentage that the local firm participates in the whole team.
Yeah.
So the more the firm participates, the, the larger the amount of points it can get out of the local category.
And I think that's a great point, because it prevents that someone just partnering with someone that has-
Right.
An, an executive suite office here.
Just give 5% and get the whole point, yeah.
Yeah, an executive suite here with two employees, and they don't, they're not really. So I think we have to be cautious over that.
That's great. And I really appreciate all the work. This is wonderful. It's so great. It really is. Thank you, Bob, and Cindy, and the consultants for bringing this.
Quit thanking them, Dr. Rice. We have a lot to cover. Ms. Pena, and Ms. Pena, I haven't even got to talk tonight, so Ms. Pena, you go ahead.
I know, I'm the only one who is hitting the light button. Everybody else was jumping in.
Everyone else is hitting it, but there's jumping in.
But remember, it's because I'm a rule follower. So, I have, I, no, I'm not an engineer, and I know I'm not an architect, but I did work for the Corps of Engineers for 29 years. So I did learn some of the lingo. And this, you've already done the majority of the planning here for project manager. You've already got it here. This looks great. This is a lot of work you did. But I did have a question about the form, two things. And Tony whispered to me before he left that it was important to him. I agree with everything that's been said about giving local people some, a little bit of an advantage, because they did vote for this, so they should. This is going to do a lot for our economy. But at the same time, I wanted to question on Form, Tab C, where if they've already done work for the district, they get extra points.
And I think we actually had some conversation about that earlier. What we could do is stop that, that criterion, that descriptor, at the point at which it says for each, and now we're going to substitute comparable project in place of K-12, each comparable project that demonstrates good performance on time and on budget, 10 points. So rather than, you know, giving that additional points specifically for experience with AISD. And let me even kind of explain a little, in a little more detail where that comes from. In the submission, they'll be required to submit five projects. And so we're going to give them as many as two points on each of those five projects, and so we'll evaluate each of their five projects. We could change that to just say, you know, demonstrates good performance on time and on budget, and not, not grade it, not score it, based on it being AISD experience.
Yeah, and that number's kind of high as well, because that is in there. But I think we want to give everybody a, the ability to bid in for this, you know, get something going. The other question I have is, this is an architect's evaluation form. Are, do we ever have any firms that do design-build, where they design it and build it?
We have done that in the past. The KPODs, I believe, were designed-build many years ago, but I-
My experience with design-build is that it is not a good value for us, because you have to, you know, the design builder has their team, and then we have to hire a third party to manage them. So we've got an extra layer there. And so my experience with design-build is, is that it is not typically, and is not a good value for the district.
Okay. Well, those were my two questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Thank you, Ms. Solz. I'm glancing. I think we're good with the architect's evaluation form.
All right.
Make tweaks and changes, and we'll come back. Ms. Powell, let's continue on.
Sure. And, and the next several slides, we can go through very quickly. One of the things that we discussed as part of this planning process are the, the controls that we have in place, and in our workflow. Up to this point, we have, in Plant Services, tracked projects on Excel spreadsheets. And certainly, you know, when you start talking about procuring goods, services, we have all of our normal controls in place on how, you know, the board approves the, the bid, or the RFP, if you will, or the RFQ, if it's an architect. And then the information flows to purchasing, a budget is created, information flows to purchasing, they create a PO, and then pay apps come in, and they're reviewed and signed off and, and paid. All those controls are there, and they're, they're very good, very strong. In terms of managing the projects themselves, what we have been doing up to this point is tracking them on Excel spreadsheets, very, you know, manual process. One of the things that Jacobs had recommended to us is that we should look at some project management software for Bob and his group to help them manage these projects. And so we've already previewed, Bob and his group have previewed a three, I think, already. And so we're looking at that, and I think that will help us be more efficient in how we manage these projects and the schedules. We have, again, looked at workflow. We're going to have a meeting in June to talk about all the steps in the process internally, to make sure that we're efficient and that we're being consistent in how we handle each and every transaction. Budget code structures, we want to be able to look at a budget code and know, okay, that's a condition-type project, and it's at this campus. So we'll, we'll do, and we've been doing that to a large degree with projects that we've done up to this point, and we'll continue doing that. So they helped us reinforce that. Then also, again, using the software to help with scheduling and managing that is something I think will be a valuable tool to Plant Services. Document control. With any construction project, there's a tremendous number of documents that have to be archived and retained, and we do a very good job of that. But I think what we've asked Jacobs for, and what they've recommended, is a, a structure for archiving and, and recording those documents in a very consistent form, so that each one has a particular, follows a, a particular numbering system, so easily we can go back and retrieve those documents. And again, document imaging for electronic storage, so all of this will help us, again, be efficient. This is what I spoke to just a minute ago in looking at workflow and controls. We will meet internally within the business office, make sure that that workflow is efficient as we begin these projects. Jacobs has given us a, a table of contents, if you will, of a procedures manual for every phase of a construction project. They have helped us in, in looking at best practices and- They have helped us in looking at best practices and procedures, and looking at what we already do for specific steps at the beginning of that process that get us into the process. As we move along through these construction projects, we will build on that and finish out that procedures manual with our workflow and our control procedures documented, up to and including CBOC, Bond Oversight Committee Operations. Then, reporting as well is very key. We've had some conversation about how to improve upon reporting. Right now, we report to our Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee on a quarterly basis. That reporting process in and of itself has been good. We've gotten lots of compliments on it, but it's very cumbersome for us. It takes a number of people, a tremendous amount of time to put that thing together once a quarter. And so, we've looked at how we can develop reporting templates, one-page templates, if you will, for individual projects. And we will create that some, to some degree, out of the software that we get from Bob and them. To other degrees, we may be looking at our new data warehouse system to help us capture information from different places and create a data dashboard view that helps us with these. And so, we've actually had a sample, it's hard to see on the screen, but Jacobs drafted a sample report for the program as a whole, not just an individual program, but the overall program glance, a one-page report that will give users information on projects and expenditures and highlights, if you will, that we can make available on our website to the public. And so, that will all be very helpful to us. And moving into the schedule, this was, I think, probably from our staff's perspective, this was an enormous benefit to us to actually work on sequencing all the projects and scheduling them. When I talk about sequencing, if you just think about the Career Tech Center for a minute, and you understand everything that has to happen in a particular order, in order for that Career Tech Center to open, we anticipate in August of 2017. It's an incredible amount of individual steps that have to happen along the way. And so, we worked with one of Jacob's senior schedulers, actually came out, had some software. We displayed this up on the wall, and we talked through all the sequencing that we had to have for that particular project, and then the other priority-type items. And then, he took that information back, and he looked at what we gave him, along with the data from the facility assessment, where each building was scored with, you know, in terms of the critical need at the building on the deficiencies identified there, and used that data to put the more critical items up front. Those schools that had more critical needs are earlier in the mix. Also, trying to spread the work across the district and balance the work across the five years. It was a really fascinating process to me to watch that happen. We made some adjustments after we saw first drafts. And so, what we have, and you have at your place, are a couple of different images there. There's one that is shown to you, the, all the projects by phase. Then, there's a second view that shows you the projects by high school network, just a different slice and dice, if you will, different view of the projects. And so, we have a five-year roadmap here. And one thing that is very key to understand is that this is not carved in stone. There may be occasions where something occurs, and we need to make an adjustment in the schedule. And I guess one example I can give you that, you know, we've encountered even with the 2009 bond packages, maybe an HVAC system that was supposed to, you know, we anticipated or didn't anticipate needing to replace until, you know, five years out, all of a sudden has so much trouble that we determined that it's got to be replaced. We can't wait that long. So, we began to flip-flop a couple of things. So, this is by no means cast in stone, but this is our roadmap. This is what we're starting from in terms of determining the amount of bonds we'll sell each year, and also in scheduling our workload. Another piece of all this was to balance the work across the five years and trying to understand the capacity within the contractor community to do the work, along with other projects and other programs that are going on around us. So, this was an enormous benefit to us. Incorporated in here, then, was a view of, an analysis of cash flow needs, and when we would actually draw down cash on not only these construction projects, but also on the technology work, the fine arts work, and the transportation purchases that will take place out of the bond package, so that we can identify the dollar value of bonds that we need to sell each year to meet those project needs. So, enormous help. This slide shows just a summary of our expected completion dates on the new construction. You can see we have a number of items there in 2016, including the two new elementary schools, the classroom addition at Workman, the dual-language academies. When we talk about that, the dual-language academies, that's when the work itself, the renovation work will be done at those schools. We've talked about beginning those programs in fall of 2015, beginning to bring cohorts in. Then, the renovation work at those two sites will actually be complete in 2016. 2017 would be the Career Tech Center, the Ag Center. 2018, Fine Arts Center and Athletics Complex in August of 2019 is our plan.
Dr. Rosas?
I would like to add on that slide, Cindy, if you would go back to that one, that as we've talked before, and we've had a lot of discussion with staff, but just to remind everyone that the transition of students and staff, there will be no transition next year of students or staff of the 14, 15 school year. But this summer and the fall of 14, we will be making decisions about the programming, the boundaries, in some cases where we need boundaries, and the transition of staff, the review of our processes and things like that. So, a lot of work will be done in preparation for the fall of 15. But I think it's important to say it one more time, that there's no student or staff transition in the fall of 14.
And say it one more time, everything won't be built in a year. Sometimes everyone's not so patient. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hock.
No magical building of buildings, are there? Are there, Mr. Carlisle?
It's one brick at a time.
One brick at a time. Mr. Barron?
I hope we can all see how extraordinarily complex all this is. And a moment ago, I said that, wait until you see how these things are packaged. Well, look at this timeline and how many projects are going on at the same time. I'm pretty sure that there's going to be work here for everybody needs work, is what it looks like. I'm real proud of you guys. Jacobs, same thing. Just tremendous. I cannot imagine doing this project, this scope of projects on spreadsheets or with a notebook in my pocket. Poor Bob would have had a stroke. All right?
Wow.
We don't want that to happen.
Don't bring that up, Mr. Barron.
Yeah, don't talk stroke to a man my age.
We're talking golf, right?
Or a man that has a lot of work ahead of him.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Dr. Rush?
Thank you. Yeah, this is phenomenal. This is great. I have a question, maybe for our consultants, and you guys maybe know this as staff. A lot of this that is occurring is circumventing the need to have an outside project manager to implement this entire bond program. Can you give us an idea in dollars, or I guess more accurately, probably percent of total scope of a bond package, what a project manager normally would cost?
It goes from 2.5% to 3.5% or 4%, depending on the amount of work. As an example, if you get a single program manager that will have the whole program, that means you have one program director, one construction manager, and project managers is easier than if you have three or four, then each of them has the same superstructure to control the program.
Okay.
So, if you have one, we have seen all the way from 2.5% to 3.5%.
Okay, okay.
Now, we also provided staff a recommendation in terms of staffing, meaning if you're looking at bodies, individuals that can, that are needed. Just to give you an idea, just visualize, three months from now, you're going to have 10 bid packages that represent about 40 projects going. That means 10 architects that will be submitting to staff drawings as they go through schematic design. They will have to look at those drawings, make sure, well, you've been with the Corps, you know that it'll be required, that they look at the plan, meet the deliverables, make sure they go by the schedule. And then, as the project goes, the design phase is the easy phase. Then, three months after, you're going to have Phase Two with 10 more bid packages. That means another 30 projects. So, six months from now, you will have 70 projects going on schools that are occupied, that you need to make sure their projects are done safely, you need to have a safety plan in place. So, it is really a huge task, and you need to have the resources, that are experienced to get this work done. I mean, you have great staff. I mean, the staff is fantastic, the experience they have, but you see, one, two, three, maybe four, five. I mean, I can guarantee you, it's not going to happen with five people. Now, the option is go out there and hire. You don't know necessarily where you will be hiring, you will be looking at resumes, will they work together well? Will that work? I mean, if you go and hire. Or you could go to a firm and outsource the work, working with staff under the staff leadership, which is what we have seen managed in most, not all, in most projects of this size.
And I'll tag on to that, that you're going to see a slide just a minute with those staffing recommendations on there.
Okay. Well, my point to that is, you know, that 2 to 3.5, as high as 4% on a $663 million bond, we're looking at $25 million of cost. And I know, I don't know what the, you know, you have made a decision on what the project management software is going to be, plus the staffing recommendations. This is incredibly efficient. We're not going to come anywhere near those dollars and pull off, in my opinion, likely a better job than hiring somebody as a project management firm to manage this entire bond package. So, again, kudos. That's phenomenal. This is great. This is so great. Last question, just from my understanding, on these sheets of the phasing, I understand the color coding, the construction, green, design, yellow, abatement, and owner, can you provide just a little detail on what those two are, specifically the owner, but?
I can. In existing buildings, we're going to have to identify asbestos and abate the asbestos. The owner part is furnishing, FFNE, move-in, set-up, that kind of thing. That's the tail of the job.
Okay, okay. Great, great. And the other thing, will this type of information be up on the website for the community to see, or will these be internal documents?
We can put these on the website.
Okay. Well, whatever we choose there, the, whatever we can do that's not cumbersome, that is more transparent, the better. I think we're only going to be strengthened.
And Dr. Rush, I know staff has looked at, you know, previously, for educational purposes, they have the bond section of the website. They're looking to transition that into implementation, how things are going, things, so people automatically will know everything's not going to be built in a year.
Right.
Things take time, and put some of those timelines on there.
Absolutely. And then, Ms. Powell, the other suggestion that I have is, as you know, we have already tasked the CBOC with coming up with reformations and ideas for the new CBOC for this bond implementation. Please make sure that you dialogue with that committee chair to make sure that they are on the same page with you guys as far as moving forward, so that when they come to us, it's with all of your input as well.
And it's been my plan that when they meet in June, that would be part of the focus of that meeting, is we'll share this information with them, and then ask them for their input on what that next CBOC
Yeah.
Needs to look like, what they liked and didn't like, and, you know, their recommendations.
Yeah, perfect. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Rush, Ms. Pena.
Well, this bond package is huge, it's for sure, but, and it's not part of the bond package, but they, you have another building that's going up. It's the elementary by Crouch. So, that's going to be under construction as well.
You're right, yeah.
So, it's more than just this one. And I guess, I was trying to think, how are they going to fit that into here, so you can have that using this method as well of tracking where that school is?
Yes, yes, we can do that.
All right.
Always a good point, Ms. Pena. Ms. Powell?
Okay.
We're in the home stretch.
Quickly, the cash flow, they helped us evaluate cash flow needs, and we'll draw down cash for these projects. That will help us, we're about to take that information. Mr. Drolinger and I work with First Southwest on the actual dollars for the bond sales themselves. I like this graphic. It is a very succinct representation of the five-year bond program and the phasing, when the phases begin and end. So, I think that, I personally have liked that representation. But that, again, was part of putting the packages together and then telling us not only the sequence, but the, once we create these phases, when does that phase need to begin, and when should it be expected to end, given the particular projects that are in there? Again, five-year program, you can see, representation here on when those individual phases end. Phase one and two began, I'll back up here, you can see that Phase one and Phase two began just within months of each other, and then, the projects within those two phases, actually, some of them will carry out all the way till 2017, so they actually both end at the same time. Then, this is a summary slide of our projects and the bid packages. We have worked on this even through this week. We have 111 projects. They're grouped into 43 different bid packages, and you can see here the size ranges of those packages. And that's what Krista mentioned earlier. When we go back and we start talking about architects, you can see that there's a lot of opportunity here and a lot of different size ranges for large firms and small firms, and likewise, when we get to the contractors, big and small as well. In terms of work, there's new construction, there's additions, there's renovations, so there's a variety of work here as well. This is the slide I mentioned a moment ago that summarizes what our potential staffing needs may be over the course of five years. These are not positions that we all need at one time. We will need to potentially ramp up and then ramp back down based on the projects that are going on. But to help us manage the program and the controls, there would be a controls manager working on the budget and the schedule updates, cost control specialist, potentially two document control specialists or admin positions, and then project managers, which will be key to us. Maybe as many as six project managers at its height, and two construction specialists. That map specialist is the position that will manage the database that we get from that facility assessment. That is something that we intend to be a living document that will help us with planning and budgeting in future years, and that's something that we have to keep updated. So, that's that position. We are still looking and making some assessments ourselves. We may have some capacity internally to do some of this work. And again, these are not all positions we need tomorrow, so we're still assessing internally what that need will be. So, with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Luckily, Mr. Barron's first. We'll end on your joke, Dr. Rush. Mr. Barron?
A joke? Ms. Powell, could you go back to the one that says, "Task four, cash flow? Are the non-construction bonds blended into this graph, the technology, for example?"
Yes.
Could you tell us what the lines actually mean? Not the whole thing, a little bit.
The red line, and I'm going to have Krista help with some of the, the red bars are bond sales, the green bars are the cash draws. Okay? And so, we're taking this information now, and we've had discussion even today with First Southwest about the dollar amount that we need to sell year one, year two, and so, we're continuing those conversations.
I think you pretty much covered. The red means is the plan the district originally had for the sales of bonds. The green line that goes under is the way we're going to be paying the architects and contractors, is the expenditures based on the schedule that you saw before. That's the way the payment is going to go. So, we wanted to make sure that the district was going to have enough money at each of the stages to cover the needed, the costs. Now, one thing that we noticed when we put this document together, you see the delta on the second bar? There is a delta between the green and the red. That means that the district has the flexibility, that was Cindy mentioned, they're working with this company, making sure that if you don't have to sell all of that amount of bond at the beginning, maybe you need to, you will sell less, and then, that will be beneficial to the community and the taxpayers. Then, that's what she's going to be looking at, making adjustments as a result of the comparison of the cash flow with the costs.
And just very briefly, there are a couple of different ways that you can handle or schedule your bond sales. You can either sell bonds for the project, or sell bonds for the cash need. And we have historically sold them for the project, and so, we would sell all the bonds for the project right up front before we issue any POs. So, that's some of the conversation we're having. Different districts do it differently, and so, we're having that conversation with First Southwest to see if there's any opportunity there. Southwest to see if there's any opportunity there to maybe sell any less at any point in time and, and then have that help us manage that tax rate impact.
Okay, so when we say that we're going to pay off technology bonds, say in five years, okay? Do we sell technology bonds, or are we just selling a chunk of bonds and happen to be calling some of them, these are the technology bonds?
Well, to determine the dollars that we're going to sell in year one, a component of that will be the dollars for the technology we plan to spend or we plan to purchase in that year one. Mr. Branham and his staff have a five-year schedule for their cash draws, their projects, and when those things will be implemented. And so, they reviewed that even again in the last week, and we've made some tweaks in there. So to answer your question, we know specifically, out of that big pot of money, what we plan to do in year one, a piece of that will be for technology, and it's specific to the work we plan to do that year with technology.
And then we adjust our taxes to reflect that?
Right. Yeah, the tax rate, by law, when we levy a debt service rate, we can only levy enough tax or levy a rate sufficient to generate the taxes to pay the principal and interest that are due in that coming year. And so, you know, however we sell the bonds, then that dictates the repayment schedule. And again, the piece each year that is sold for technology, those bonds are amortized over five years. So all that plays into the impact on the tax rate.
Anything there surprising you?
No, I don't think so. Again, we have historically sold bonds by project and not by cash draw needs. So if you think about it, if we have a career tax center that's part of phase one, we sell bonds for it, we're selling, you know, based on what we've been doing, all the bonds to cover that whole project, where we're actually going to draw down bits of that over two years. And so, that's, that's part of the conversation we're having now with First Southwest is, you know, what, what is most appropriate? And different districts do it differently. And so, we want to do what helps us best manage that tax rate impact.
Thank you.
Dr. Rush?
I have a request. Is it possible for us to get these images that are in these different slides, not necessarily native form, but something that we can look at separately, because they're, even on those slides, they're kind of small?
Right, and I think we can get electronic copies to you, PDF copies that you can look at, and also their hard copies. Even at this particular graphic, there should be a hard copy at your place in one of the big...
Oh, there is one of those, too. Okay, I didn't see that one. Or I saw it.
We'll buy you some glasses, Dr. Rush.
Yeah, I didn't bring them with me. I was looking everywhere at the beginning. And then the last thing, this is fantastic. My only comment is that bond pass Saturday, it's Wednesday, and you're still unsure of certain things. I just don't understand. This is great. Thank you so very much. What a volume, volume of work.
Done great work, a number of people.
Excellent.
Yeah, and Jacob, and I have to tell you that, that this has been a very fascinating process for all of us, and we are months ahead because of the assistance that Jacobs gave us with this. And so, we're very grateful to their entire team. And the work that we've done here, I think, I truly believe, will help us ensure that the quality of the product that we deliver will be much better than had we not gone through this work.
Absolutely. And with Mr. Barron's questioning on the, the cash flow and the bond sales, that's perfect, because our community wants us to be as efficient as possible with the tax dollars, and you're, you're looking at all these different angles, which is perfect. Thank you for everything.
Dr. Rush, I just wanted to add too, that from the committee standpoint, this is one of the reasons we wanted to have this work session this evening, because we thought it would be very difficult to convey the depth and breadth and the expertise that is brought forth in this. And as a district, we're used to seeing excellent reports regularly, but I am very proud to say, Dr. Gavassos and Ms. Powell and everyone involved, that this is among the best analysis I've seen, and I'm looking forward to stepping into this bond program.
Thank you, Ms. Solan, Ms. Powell, staff, thank you. We thank you, the community, for passing this bond, because there's a lot of work that went in, and we're glad we're able to use this work right now, and that's a valued thing. And we have lots of bond discussions coming up in the near future. We passed the election, now the work really begins. So with that, we're going to go into the next wonderful optimistic look of going into legislative agenda. But before we do that, seeing no objection from our colleagues, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Call this meeting back to order at 8:16 PM. We'll go on to discussion item B. 2015, as we go from an optimistic bond to the 2015 legislative session. Always optimistic, aren't we, Mr. Anderson? As much work as we put on the bond, we're going to put in that legislative. So, Dr. Gavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and this evening, we have David Anderson here with Hillco, and he's going to give us a legislative update. We have met with the committee, with the Community Engagement Committee, or the Governance Committee, I'm sorry, Governance Committee. And so, we've had a briefing and had some input on the legislative agenda, the draft, and so, David, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gavassos, President Hogg, members of the board. I was very pleased to be able to get up here early enough to hear your conversation about the bond implementation. Very impressive. The victory Saturday, certainly, but the work that has been done to move ahead as quickly as you're moving ahead, this was very helpful for me to see that, and I was glad I was here to do that. And now, on to the legislative session, because in about seven months, we'll be starting with that. And we can't wait seven months to start our work. Of course, that has to start earlier. My colleague Buddy Jones sends his regards to all of you. He was here for the initial meeting, but had a board meeting tonight in Austin, Advisory Board he's on, so, so he sent his regards to you. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to provide a context for your development of the legislative agenda for Arlington ISD for the 2015 session by talking a little bit about the political landscape, if I may, and I'm going to go ahead and pull this up. In Texas right now, we have two political parties, but as the primary showed us, we really have two clear factions within one of those. We have the Democrats, we have the Movement Conservative Faction and the Republican Party. Well, I'm sorry, I have that up there twice. We have the, I've read that correctly, incorrectly, the Moderate Conservative Faction and the Movement Conservative Faction. And for those of you who are students of Texas history or have been around long enough to have lived through the, the political battles of the '60s, '70s, and '80s, you recall that this is very similar to the circumstances we had then. It was just two factions of the Democratic Party at the time. So the circle has come around, and this is the circumstance that we have. The Texas Senate, our upper chamber right now, has 12 Democrats and we have 18 Republicans. Wait a minute, I thought we had 31 senators. We have one open seat that will be determined in a runoff election for the replacement senator for Senator Tommy Williams, who resigned to go to work for the A&amp;M system recently. But if you look at this, you'll see that our 12 Democrats are, for the most part, in urban areas, and our Republicans, 18 in number, most likely 19, based on demographics in Senate District Four, cover the rest of the state, including the large expanse of West Texas and East Texas as well. The interesting circumstance that we have is that five of the six most senior members of the Senate are Democrats. Well, there are 11 veteran Republicans, there are seven who have served, this will be their third term or less coming in. The Democrats bring that, that experience to the chamber in greater numbers, but certainly their, their numbers are smaller within that context. And Lieutenant Governor David Dewhurst, the presiding officer. When we look at the Senate and consider the group we'll be dealing with next spring, what we're probably going to see will be 11 Democrats, mostly urban seats again, 20 Republicans, two terms or fewer, seven of them. Arlington ISD will be represented by Senator Hancock and Senate District 10 winner, of course, that's open in the fall. The important point for U.S. trustees is that two of the key leadership positions in the Senate are going to be new. The Senate Education Chair will be a new chairman. Senator Patrick is not returning as a senator. He may be, may be back as presiding officer, but regardless, we will have a new chair in Senate, and with Senator Williams' resignation, we'll have a new chair in Finance. I would speculate that Senator Jane Nelson certainly looks well-positioned to be the person who could chair Finance. She has a wealth of background with finance issues, with her Health and Human Services work. And again, we won't know that until the, the next lieutenant governor names that. But to again, again, to give you that context, this is what we're looking at. The Texas House right now, we have 55 Democrats, 95 Republicans, and of those, the count will vary, but generally, 64 are in that Moderate Conservative Faction, and 30 or so will be in the Movement Conservative Faction. And again, those votes will, will change a little bit as we go through. And then one of the Republicans takes a consistently libertarian point of view, and so it makes for a very interesting mix in the House, and certainly one, as we think about the legislative program, that provides, that provides a pretty good roadmap for what we dealt with last time, and of course, Speaker Joe Strauss. The House projected, as we look ahead, 54 to 60 of the House members next session will most likely be Democrats, 96 to 90 most likely will be Republicans. And on that seniority list, three terms or more, 59 of the members will have three terms or more. Less than three terms, 91. This will be one of the least experienced House of Representatives that, certainly that I have dealt with in my now 11 years at Hillco and the six years at the Education Agency prior to that. And again, for the, for the point of leadership that we're interested in more than any other, new chairs for appropriations and for Article III, which is the education appropriations. This assumes that the Speaker returns and he keeps Jimmy Don Acock as his Chairman of House Public yet. So there are some assumptions there that, again, depend on, on some things that roll out. So when we look at the 84th Legislature, in terms of the big picture of issues, there are a number of pending issues that you can see that, that we've carried over from last time. Our infrastructure needs with regard to transportation, water policies and water projects, and although we had the big bond passage last November, we have a transportation bond up before the populace this November. My contention is that we have not heard the end of these, and these will be very important topics, and will take a lot of the airtime in the next legislative session. I think we're also going to hear a lot about tax policies. We've begun to hear comments by, by a number of the outside forces in that legislative bubble about excess revenue. I think one of the questions when we look at excess revenue is, is that really excess revenue, or is that revenue that really should have been directed to projects that were underfunded last time? That, that notion of excess revenue really is in the eye of the beholder? And of course, excess revenue also has a consideration, and that is the, the revenue estimates that are used at the beginning point of that process. And we've had a circumstance in the last three sessions in which the revenue estimate has not been very accurate. Probably our three most inaccurate revenue estimates, certainly in my adult lifetime, with a number that was too high going into 2009, a number that was too low in 2011, and in terms of 2013, the verdict is still out. But, but our, our excess revenue is certainly growing at a rate that would say perhaps that revenue estimate was too low. One of the issues that we talked about last time that probably comes back again this time is the fight about pensions, primarily the public pensions in the smaller categories, not necessarily ERS and TRS, but if you talk about this, you can ignore those, and that's the, the fundamental argument over, should these be defined benefits or defined contributions? I would say to you that, that if this is something that is significant for you as the people making policy decisions for a major public employer, we need to pay a little attention to this, because I think it will come up in the session. We also know about local government transparency and local government debt. There were several bills filed last time that did not pass that had to do with local government transparency. One of the things that I would mention to you is that, in looking at this, we may want to talk a bit about what's the best way for us to operate as transparently as possible. We had people argue last time that we need to put more information in the ballot language. We had other people that argued that by, by putting more language, more in the ballot language, you actually confuse voters. There are better ways to provide information about what you're doing as trustees. And of course, I think last Saturday has evidenced that here is a body that is very transparent, very clear in their communications with the public, and in this case, your constituency responded and said, yes, we understand the need, you've made your case, and we support what you've done. Local government debt is involved. Again, the perspective that is presented is that local governments have taken on too much debt. I would argue to you that the other side of that coin is that the state has not lived up its responsibilities to help fund local governments, as it's put more responsibilities on schools and cities, and this is one reason why we've had to do that. The key point also for us is that when we look at Texas right now, we have almost 10,000 local government units between our local city governments, municipalities, counties, and so forth. It's a, it's a strong force and one in which common interests need to be identified. And certainly, you've done a great job of identifying what the interests are here in Arlington. On the education issues, as we go forward, school finance and education appropriations, and I have these linked, but I also have them separated, as you'll see, because our early reconnaissance of the returning membership indicates that there is a trepidation about getting into school finance in this next legislative session, because the school finance case is still pending. And that anything that is done in terms of financing public schools will be done through the appropriations process. And I'm optimistic, because of the overall financial circumstances, that are, that there are some things that can be done to improve our funding from the state. But I say that within that framework of, I don't expect to see any major overhaul of the school finance structure take place in a regular session next spring, perhaps in a special session, following a Supreme Court direction back to the District Court. Transparency, as I mentioned earlier, with finance and elections, will be important in our school community. Accountability and assessment and House Bill Five implementation modifications are linked together. You can't talk about what else must be done with accountability and assessment without considering the implementation of House Bill Five. We know that Chairman Acock has begun to have some conversations with school leaders, elected leaders who are trustees, as well as superintendents, chief academic officers, and others to say, we didn't really do anything with three through eight assessment in House Bill Five. We really need to be thinking about how we do this. And I will tell you that in my conversations with Dr. Acock, he is thinking about things that are as fundamentally significant to assessment as, should we be looking at a pre-test, post-test arrangement? Should we be looking at some sort of random stratified assessment of students for program evaluation purposes? What's the role of norm reference testing, particularly those assessments that are nationally recognized and validated with regard to college readiness from ACT and from the College Board? Should we be looking at including college acceptance assessments such as the SAT and the ACT in our state program? We know that those are already authorized by law, they haven't been funded in the last two biennia. So those are things that are all going to be considered as we lead into the session. Pre-K funding and policies also will be important. We've seen both of the gubernatorial candidates start to talk about pre-K in a pretty significant way, but with some fundamental differences. And the last thing that I want to mention is truancy juvenile justice issues. Senate Bill 1234 was passed last session. It was a bill that started out as one that raised a lot of concerns for us on the school side, also with the justices of the peace organization. Thanks to some really good work on the House side, that bill became a very good bill. It was vetoed by the governor. We really believe that some of the points that we saw passed in 1234 will be considered again early on. So I think that from the perspective of a large mid-urban school district, does a really good job with this, we want to be looking at some of those issues as you develop your program. I have some information about school finance. I'm not going to, to go through all of this, just to say that in your copy of this, you'll see the context for school finance and where we will be. The critical point for us is that the fourth bullet down, the 2013 restoration of funds moved Texas from 49th to 46th. So we didn't jump a lot. It was, it was, it was money that was very helpful and something that our schools across the state needed, but we're still... But we're still $464 per pupil less than we were at our high watermark in 2010, 11. Teacher evaluation project is one that will get a lot of attention. There was a hearing today that the House Public Ed Committee had. This was the primary focus. It wasn't all they talked about. And of course, Arlington is involved in the pilot. And the presentation that I heard earlier today by one of your staff members on this was very enlightening. And clearly, you are going to be in a much better position to understand what's going on with the teacher evaluation project because of your involvement. There are a number of connections here with federal policy. Fundamental question, if we move to this new teacher evaluation system, it's contingent upon student results from the current testing program. What does that say about the legislature's willingness or interest to make modifications in assessment? It's a complex web. And again, I applaud you for the involvement with this. I think it's going to put you in a much better position to understand where we're going and inform whatever decisions you make about a local or a state teacher evaluation program moving forward. School choice will be a very big issue. This will include transfers of all types, parent trigger legislation, the statewide achievement legislation. I look back at the work you did last time. Arlington is a district of choice. You provide many options for students within the district and for students who are outside the district who look at Arlington ISD and the opportunities you offer. In this case, I think we're looking at a wide range of choice, and how you want to approach that, I think, will be a significant decision. When you look at Texas right now, I think Arlington is a great example of this. If you look back a quarter century ago, in Texas as a whole, we had 3.3 million students. 25 years later, we're over 5 million students, a 50% increase. At that point 25 years ago, as you can see, one student, one child in four lived in poverty. That number now is one in three. Living in poverty is not the same as being on free and reduced price lunch. We've gone from 46% of our kids to 61% of our kids who qualify for that. And you'll see the bilingual numbers. The point I wanted to make with this is that this is not the same state in 2014, 15 as we had in 1990. And what we have to do is make sure that the people who have been elected to represent us and make decisions about our policies in Austin understand the changing face of public schools in Texas. These factors, as we say in the last bullet, these factors, these initiatives require significant financial commitment from the state of Texas to match the significant financial commitment that you as trustees are asking the people here in Arlington to make. So I think the fundamental question as you develop the legislative program is, will the lawmakers in the 84th session be more interested in those political issues that we've seen arise over the last several years than improving critical state services? Do they take the long view or the short view? And I know from my conversations with you individually, as well as with the group of three, your interest is in helping them take that longer view and understand the decisions they make in 2015 are going to be critically important to our success, not just in 15, 16, 16, 17, but in 2025 and 2030. Be glad to answer any questions or respond to any comments that you have. Again, it's been a very positive experience for Marion to work with you as in our first round, and we're looking forward to helping you develop that legislative agenda going forward.
Dr. Reisch.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The question, I guess, that I would have is, our focus obviously is going to be on critical long-term needs. I fully believe that the focus of this less tenured body of legislature is going to be on political completely. Do you think there's a great chance for us to put things out there, to get sponsors for bills proactively that would actually gain any traction on those critical areas? Or is there any way we can craft the wording of those bills that kind of appease the political side of what they're all trying to likely do in that session?
Several questions within that question.
Yep.
The first part of it is, I think, the last thing you mentioned, and that is crafting the language. And fundamentally, how we approach, what solutions we're proposing in legislation, I think they can be crafted in a way that they can garner support from different factions in the House. And can we find members to sponsor them? Yes. One of the challenges I think we have here in Arlington is you're going to have a relatively inexperienced legislative delegation.
Right.
And we know from our experience in Austin that it's very difficult for a first-term member, even a second-term member, to carry significant legislation from the start to the finish. The legislative process in Texas is designed to keep bills from passing. It's not set up to make it easy to pass bills. And when I was taking my government class in McGregor High School in 1969, I had a government teacher who said that. She also said that no person's life, liberty, or property is safe when the legislature meets every other year in Austin. I'm not sure about that now, but when she explained the process, I questioned then, well, why don't they make it easier to pass bills? And as I've grown with this, I'm very pleased that the process is designed the way it is. So one of the things that we have to think about, I think, from an Arlington perspective is, your legislative agenda will probably be very similar to legislative agendas from some of our other large mid-urban school districts around the state because you share similar populations, similar demographic interests, similar economic interests. We've got to look for those sort of partnerships so that we can find the more experienced members who have the ability to pick up a bill from the beginning and carry it all the way across the goal line at the end. It doesn't mean that your relatively inexperienced delegation can't do that, but the odds are against them doing that. So I think we have to look across the state to see where the similar interests are and find potential bill sponsors.
Yeah, that's good. I fear that we're going to have to be playing very strong defense in this next legislative session, much more so than I'd rather us have to endure.
I agree with you. I think your assessment is right on target. One thing we know about the public education community and their relationship with the legislature is that we play very good defense. We have not always played great offense. House Bill Five last year was an example of a singular piece of legislation that the public education community and in this regard, the entire community, teachers, administrators, and parents, and trustees, all came together to help make that bill, the significant bill that it was, and pass it. And if we look back on that, we see that it passed the House unanimously, not a single no vote. It passed the Senate unanimously, not a single no vote. And when it came to implementation of the early rules related to graduation and other critical areas, it passed the State Board of Education with only one negative vote. So the bill had overwhelming support in the legislature, with the governor's signature, and in the implementation at the state board level.
Well, I thank you for your analysis, your continued work with us as a board, with our committee. Look forward to that in the future. That bill specifically did pass overwhelmingly. There were several amendments that were not voted favorably by some of our local legislators, and we've got a lot of work to do, a lot of education, and a lot of consensus building, hopefully, that can be attained.
And your point is one, if I may underscore it, I think it's an important one for you as trustees, and certainly for me who is helping to carry your message in Austin. There were concerns that came up. There were amendments that were favorable that people may have voted against, or unfavorable amendments offered. In the end, those unfavorable amendments were fended off. The favorable ones made it. And I think that the people who had questions about the bill looked at it and saw that in spite of not getting that particular piece added, the bill was still so strong and so important that in the end, they voted for it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Ms. Solins.
Thank you, President Hogg. Mr. Anderson, Ms. Powell, I want to thank you for this presentation and the work. I feel like we're at a good spot on a draft agenda, and I think that is very helpful. And I look back to our last legislative session and appreciate your work, and also the work of the Board Legislative Committee that I thought did a great job and set a great bar for our board going forward. I know that we will have changes because this is the climate that we're in. And so any work we need to be doing now on any other next best steps, I'm sure that we will hear from both of you. But at this time, we have a draft agenda. And I wanted to share just briefly with the board, I did attend the Legislative Action Committee with TASPI, LAC. And interesting to watch 1,079 independent school districts try to decide collectively what they had in mind for this session. And that the first two to three hours were exciting. But I wanted to share with you that they did go through the region, 20 regions, priority statements, and tried to organize that and sort that out. No changes to the cornerstone principles that were there, but something that we saw because of the work that we had already done, it was very helpful for me to participate. But also, what they have, if you've seen the TASPI legislative agenda that's posted online, I'm sure you've seen it. It's a bit of a laundry list, a long list of things. And I was glad to see something that we've talked about here, and I think it was another opportunity for us to lead, is simplification, simplification into what's needed. And so that was the goal, and it was put together that way. I haven't seen the output yet, but when I do see that output, I'll be sure and get that out to you right away.
TASPI will have a little different profile in the Capitol with the new Deputy Executive Director for Governmental Relations. And I think that Jim Crow and the executive committee made a very, very good decision to hire a veteran governmental relations person to step in and help lead that team. And they've also brought in a former deputy commissioner from TEA, who will be doing a lot of work with governmental relations, Dr. Robert Duran, former San Antonio superintendent. Again, from someone who works with TASPI and appreciates the presence that organization has, I think that those two people will strengthen the TASPI presence at the Capitol as well as their ability to help create the, what is it, the team? Instead of a team of eight, we're talking about a team of 1,079.
A team of 1,079. They're pretty vocal.
I think that those two people will do a tremendous job in helping to bring that TASPI agenda together and present it at the Capitol next session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. 1,079 districts that all have different ideas of what to do.
Yes.
Yes, they do. And very differing sizes. So I'm glad we're part of the large schools consortium together. So I have two comments on the draft agenda. We're looking at two areas I think we need to consider, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Powell and Mr. Cale. I think things we might want to look at putting in there. One is, we've realized in the past, we've come in, especially with our gas fund, of how we can invest those dollars, and we have a lot of barriers from the state of how we can invest it, so much that you're not even really pulling the interest of where a normal investment could be. So I think looking at something like that, everyone promotes local control. Well, give us a little more local control because right now, we're so limited, it's really tough to even invest those dollars to be able to pull the interest on those. So I think something like that, something that could get some traction in the session, is one thing I think we really need to add under the finance piece under that.
And there may be some pertinent circumstances with regard to a request for Attorney General's opinion regarding a request from San Antonio ISD on investments that may be important for us. We'll take a look at that and explore that.
Yeah, and especially on funds. And I think it comes up, especially when cities don't have as many barriers of how they can invest gas funds as to what we have for those monies of where they've come in, where we, you know, if the board saw it fit, put that into an endowment and be able to use that interest to perpetually fund and help fund some things. But right now, you can't even invest it aggressive enough to even come to a midway range with that because of the state legislature's rules on how we invest. The other piece that, Mr. Cale, I don't know if we want to go into discussion, if there's ever any look of us going out of TRS active care, is that something we need to address in the 2015 legislative session? Just saying, Mr. Andersons?
Or Jamie, you all had a conversation.
President Hogg, that's something that there was a lot of discussion about at LAC on TRS opt-out. And there was interest across the state.
TRS opt-out, or are we talking active care?
There was both.
So you've got TRS for our retirement and then active care for our health insurance.
There was a lot of discussion of both.
Okay.
And TASPI, so I wanted to share that with you. And so we were doing a review to see exactly where we are on that, on what existing legislations in place. But there was a lot of interest on that.
I think that's great. As we start developing this agenda and get more, we got to do that now if we've got the time to be able to do that. I think those are two factors. And looking at TRS as a whole, I do think there's going to be some people targeting and going for defined contribution, DC versus DB benefits. I don't think they're going to be real successful in that battle, but they can come with that battle. And then we've got to look at TRS active care. I think many of us are seeing right now, in TRS active care, we are handcuffed on what we can do. We have no true control over how our medical dollars and our medical health plans are invested, and I think our employees are suffering because of that.
We do anticipate that the group Texans for Secure Retirement will activate again. They were active in the fall prior to the last session. And very important, it's a group that represents literally tens of millions of Texans. And they are there to protect the interests of the defined benefit plans. So more on that as we get closer to it and hear more about them.
I just warn them, you don't want to mess with retired teachers in that section. Those are the two things I think we need to add and look at, really having a discussion and making sure those are added in there. Anything else for my colleagues? Dr. Reisch?
Mr. Anderson, with looking into the crystal ball, and one of the likely outcomes is that our very conservative faction of the Republican Party will have leadership in the Senate. And coming with that, I would presume would be immediate language and marching orders for bills that include charter facilities, funding, possible elimination of the cap, possible public school districts opening up their facilities to charters, et cetera. Is there anything that we can do within our agenda to be proactive instead of just only any reactive stance, if that were to be the case?
When we look back at the AISD agenda from the 2013 session, I thought one of the things that you did very well was structure your policy or your position on choice. And I think you started by reminding everyone who read that and everyone we interacted with that Arlington is a district of choice and that choice is honored, that you have done more than probably any other large district your size to look at options for students. I think that's where you start with this. But the point I would bring to the conversation is that we need to also say that choice is something that should be, to the greatest extent possible, governed by the elected trustees in a community. And I think some of the concerns that I would have right now from reviewing some of the proposals that we saw last session, or that would come from policy groups, or possibly some of the elected officials based on former past positions, the interest is in redefining local control from locally elected officials to go directly to parents, where parents would, in essence, bypass a governance structure. And I think we've learned, our Texas experience, our American experience tells us that the governance structure is very important. We live in representative democracy. We elect people to make decisions for us. We don't make decisions via a referendum in which we all go down and vote on everything that you do here in Arlington. And I think that we've got to help people remember the concepts of that representative democracy are very important, and that should be foundational to any governance processes that we have. And that relates directly back to how we determine what those principles are with choice.
Thank you. I guess the final question that I would have, which is more for our committee and staff, is... staff, is what is the timetable, the timeline for our next steps and ratifying the agenda, having meetings with our, our local legislators and education and that type of thing, just so we know what kind of timetable that we're on?
Mr. Barron?
I think we'll be able to bring you an agenda before we break for summer, and then that'll give us all summer to work on our legislators, whoever they may be.
And Dr. Raish, Dr. Cavazos, I kind of talked through that. If, if budget's going well, there's a possibility by the end of June, we could have something. If not, I think Mr. Barron's right, we'll be able to hit summertime for a locked, locked and loaded agenda. Mr. Anderson, that gives us ample time.
I think so.
The kind of trend is agendas start coming out around September.
Yes.
Right around there, so I think we'll be okay.
And you do have an interesting circumstance this time that you haven't had in some while, and that is the primary House seat for Arlington ISD, you're going to have a new member, and that will be decided in November because you have a Democratic and a Republican nominee. And although the demographics indicate that this is predominantly a Republican area, we do know that, that you can't predict a vote before it occurs. I try sometimes, but, but you, you also have one of your, your Senate representatives will be a new representative for you. So, certainly, talking to the ones we know are returning becomes very important. I would recommend to you that you have conversations with all of your candidates who are on that November ballot to make sure that they understand, regardless of who the favorite is and who the underdog is, I think we need to have conversations with all of them so that they understand the perspective that you have and what's important to you as the elected representatives of Arlington ISD's community.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Dr. Raish, always a good idea for us to adopt our legislators and get us and numerous friends to have discussions with them over many a thing. So, with that, I think it's worthwhile for us to go through in a prompt fashion our, our draft legislative agenda right now. Let's go through that just for quick experience. And if it bores you, you can catch a nap on the side. So, Ms. Powell, go right ahead.
Sure, and I can go through this briefly, and I will say that this is a work in progress. We did meet with the Board Governance Committee. We've talked about this. I think in the next few weeks, we may recommend some tweaks to this. So, the overall objectives of our agenda are threefold: local control, preserving the provisions of House Bill 5, and relief from unfunded mandates. So, we have several broad categories here, more specific things. In the area of accountability and assessment, Dr. Carter's had input on this, and one of the things he pointed out he thought was important was that the state assigned more weight to index to, and the new accountability measures would index to student progress. And then, the second one was that we, that assessment, student assessment should not be the sole driver of teaching and learning. College and career-ready education requires but does not depend exclusively on student testing and assessment. He thought, again, that, or we think that it's important that we align all the accountability system so that districts and campuses obtain their full results simultaneously, integrate and simplify the reporting requirements to address deficiencies, streamline district and campus improvement planning to enable more focused allocation of limited resources to high priorities. Align the identification for the PEG program with the state accountability ratings and apply those to school districts and charters. And unacceptable performance in either of the two preceding years rather than any one of the last three years would identify a school as PEG. Number five would be increase the accommodations available for regular STAR exams to address the needs of diverse learners and limit the impact on the overall campus and district accountability ratings. Our Paul Long, our Special Ed Director, had a significant amount of input on this one. Require that TEA reexamine the testing calendar to mitigate the unintended narrowing of instructional delivery options designed to meet student tests, students' academic needs such as year-round calendar, self-paced credit recovery programs, and summer opportunities to accrue original credits. And number seven in that area was leave the authority to address low-performing schools with local school boards of trustees. And the finance area, again, as David indicated, you know, what we're hearing is that it's very unlikely that much of any substance will happen with school finance through the, the funding formulas this session because the lawsuit is still ongoing. But we have stated in here that we would seek an increase in the basic allotment. Also, that the state provide for equalized revenue per student at the 95th wealth percentile. Number three is adjusting the funding weights for the different special program areas. In particular, we think that the economically disadvantaged or state comp area program needs some adjustment as well as bilingual ESL, career tech, special ed, all the different special programs that are funded with weighted funding in the state funding system. These particular weights have not been adjusted in many years. We're seeking again funding for career tech exploration classes for eighth graders. And this next one was new this year, seeking flexibility to spend our state comp money on students who may not meet one of the 13 at-risk criteria but are economically disadvantaged. We get our state comp money based on the number of our students who are economically disadvantaged. We can only use that money to serve students who are at risk. Right now, about 60, almost 69% of our students are economically disadvantaged. That economically disadvantaged criteria is not one of the at-risk criterias. So, if, if a student may not be at risk but is economically disadvantaged, we can't take, we can't use any state funding, or state comp funds to serve the needs that those students bring to us. So, 68, 69% of our kids are economically disadvantaged, 62% of them are at risk. So, there's, there are some additional students there who we know bring to them or with them to school some additional needs, and, and we would seek some flexibility on that spending. Providing relief for unfunded mandates and not creating new unfunded mandates. We attached in the last session a schedule, a sample list of unfunded mandates to our legislative agenda. We will do likewise this year. We've added a couple of things to it, one being counselors, that we are all having to add in order to meet the, the graduation requirements in House Bill 5. So, we'll be working on that. Increasing the yield for the facilities assessment allotments through the state funding system, the $35 for the EDA and IFA allotments, this has not been raised in many years. And as our property values go up, then the amount of state funding we get for facilities comes down. And so, there are a number of districts that have requested increases in that guaranteed yield, and will likely do so again this, this next go-around. Restoring funding for the instructional facilities allotment, no money was appropriated to fund new IFA allotments in either the last biennium or the current one. So, we asked that they restore that funding. And then, restoring the funding for what is called the new instructional facilities allotment. That's $250 per student when you open a new school, you get $250 per student in that first year. In the second year, you get $250 per student for the increased enrollment in that second year. They have not funded that last session or this. Increasing funding for the instructional materials allotment. This is the allotment that provides for textbooks and instructional materials. And so, we're seeking additional funding for that for next biennium. And then, possibly including an item that was mentioned to me by Jeff Law of Tarrant Appraisal District, and that has to do with the way that property values are, or appeals on values are awarded. I actually had some conversation today with Dan Casey, with Mo Casey and Associates. They're actually doing some work on this particular topic right now, so there, there may be some additional information coming forward. But basically, it's become common practice in certain parts of the state that when a, especially an industrial property owner or a corporate property owner may file an appeal, they file it based, using an equity, an equity of process type claim. And then, that requires the appraisal review board to review a list of comp projects or comp properties that are submitted by that property owner, and unless they have very specific information to, to argue otherwise and to support a decision otherwise, the appraisal district has to give that property owner, award them the mean value of those properties that they submitted as comps. And so, or the median value. So, what that is doing is causing some significant value to come off of the tax rolls. And so, there's some interest from the appraisal districts, the chief appraisers across the state in seeing this passed, and certainly, this is one that can help us even on our debt service rate. So, that, that's something that may be of interest.
And Ms. Powell, on that real fast, I think we have to thank our, our representative on the Tarrant Appraisal Board, Mike O'Donnell, who we just appointed to fill Mr. Glassby's seat. He brought some light to this with Jeff Law and with our district as something he noticed and said, wait a second, what's this doing to school district funding? And so, it brought our attention to it, I know even more, and then Mr. Law came in and approached. So, I think we have to thank Mr. O'Donnell for representing us on that.
Absolutely. Then, in terms of pre-K, we've asked, or we'll ask that the state restore funding for pre-K programs, including restoring the pre-K expansion grant and possibly even considering weighted funding for pre-K students within the, the foundation school program formulas. And then, under school choice, an item that would request that the state grant autonomies to districts that implement effective school choice, and we can define that more clearly later. You know, one possibility there is potentially exempting school districts that have an effective school choice program from the mandated PEG transfers and that, that process. So, just as one example. So, our next steps would be to continue working with the Governance Committee to identify the items to put on the agenda. Then, we will bring ultimately a draft agenda back to this board for consideration, and then the board would adopt that, and then we would develop our plan for working with legislators, our local delegation in the fall, summer, late summer and fall.
That's perfect. Ms. Powell, let me, Dr. Raish, I'll get you in just a second, let me add one thing on there. You know, there's always discussion, especially with our extracurriculars even increasing it even more, you know, and I think it's, I don't need an answer, I think it's just time for the committee to think about and Mr. Anderson, Ms. Powell to talk through. Is there any place for this district in the future, and this may come into our new strategic plan, where if someone is homeschooled or someone of that nature and they're participating and they want to participate and acquire, do we need legislative relief for us to get partial funding for that student to be able to come in and take some of our classes? Or they're homeschooling and they need to take that advanced level physics class, and we do have space in there? Is that something? I don't, I don't know exactly where I'd go on that, it'd have to take a lot more explanation. But as we're coming up on a legislative agenda, you've got to look at partial funding and those, things of those nature, and as we expand even more, one of our greatest assets is our extracurricular. It's something to consider and think about from that piece. Dr. Raish?
Thank you. I think those are great points, President Hogg. Just two, two points. One, on the accountability, accountability and assessment number two. As far as the assessments not being the sole driver, that they should not be the sole driver, just to make sure that when we have our, our agenda drafted, that we include more specifics as far as maybe norm-referenced exams, that it's not the only accountability indicator. However, we can articulate that in our agenda, I think, is, is, is critical because the general view of any educators or any parents is, no matter what kind of improvements we make in our testing accountability system in the state, when our children are applying for colleges, they are not asking, so how'd you do on that end-of-course exam? How'd you do on that STAR test? How'd you improve? They don't care. They're looking at norm reference, they're looking at ACT, SAT. I think that's something that we are just not giving any validity to through the state legislative process that we need to try to drive, and hence, ultimately, hopefully, decrease the focus on these current accountability measures that we're tied to. The only other thing on the pre-K funding, if, does the pre-K expansion grant include accountability and outcomes measures? Was that part of that grant to show the effectiveness of that model?
Yes, you had to have certain standards.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that we, we put that out there, that we do want to be held accountable, we do want to measure, we do want metrics and outcomes. This isn't just a money grab, so I just want to make sure that we've got that in there. Thanks very much for all the work on the Governance Committee and staff, Mr. Anderson. We're in great shape. We're going to be proactive, not reactive, and hopefully drive this ball down the field quite far this time.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. Your comment there about the partial funding for homeschoolers, I mean, the, the method to do that already exists with our student, say, adventure, where they come in for part of a day or, or any of those programs. Don't we get partial funding for things like that?
For a student to receive funding, they have to attend, they can receive half funding if they attend for at least two hours a day. If they attend for four, they have to attend for four hours a day in order to be considered a full-time student and qualify for full funding.
Mr. Barron, and the examples you're drawing are more for students to catch up, so there is a waiver to allow us to do partial funding.
So, we would need something like that.
Third minute, yes. That's true.
In the case that we have now, it's if they're behind, we have a waiver that allows them to come at different hour at a time, stuff like that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Barron, and once again, that's one of those things, I think it takes a lot of, a lot of discussion to figure out how it could work and, and if it does work for what we're doing, but I think it's worth exploring. So, Mr. Barron, maybe you're right, well, maybe we won't be done till August. Hopefully, we'll be done for... Mr. Anderson, to the committee, thank you so much for all your work on this. Ms. Solins, Ms. Pena, and Mr. Barron, right, on this committee. So, thank you so much for all your hard work on this, we have a lot. And I just commend this board, we've come a long way. Our first legislative agenda in a long time was done in 2009, and boy, it was, we got it together, but we got it, and then we did another one for the 2011 session, we got even better in 2013 on our agenda. Now, I think we're, we're fully ahead of the game to really say and put in the work of something that's one of the biggest factors we can face as a district. So, I thank Mr. Anderson and Hillco for all your legislative consulting, and Ms. Powell and staff, and our committee for always staying on top of this. This is a, this is a full-time job, to say the least. So, with that, we will move on to the last piece. Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, nothing specific. Steph has the idea of what to bring back on our scorecard, and other than that, the electronic version of those documents, that was it.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Raish. We, it is 9:09, we will be going into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074 of the Texas Government Code for A Personnel, B Consultation with General Counsel and Discuss the Exchange of Real Value. We will not be reconvening this evening. Have a good night. Thank you.